We're going to call to order the town of Andover Board Select Meeting for Monday, September 13th, 2021, and we're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic-
To the republic for which it stands-
One nation-
A nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we're going to start with public speak, and we're going to start with Mike and Kathy Palazzi today.
Yes, I have something to say tonight.
Me too.
Oh, me too. Good evening to everyone. I am organizing a townwide flu clinic on Thursday, October 14th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Andover Elementary School gym. This clinic will be available to all ages three and up. There's an article going in the River East this Friday through Friday, October 8th, to alert everyone to save the date. As I receive more information on this clinic, it will be published as well. In the past, I've arranged for seniors only to receive the flu vaccine. However, good thinking on our town administrator, Eric Anderson's part, suggesting I open it up to the entire town for those who would like it. Thank you, Eric. He's gone, but thank him anyway. People would only need to bring their insurance cards and can come after work. This would allow the seniors to go at the earlier times. I'm working with the CVS on this project. We will be provided with a link to register for the clinic. If any seniors need help registering, Roberta, our municipal agent, will help me sign those people up. All this will be known soon and relayed to the public. I have asked Amanda to put the same article that will go into the River East beginning Friday to be displayed on our website so all could see it. Thank you, Amanda. Regarding the booster vaccine for COVID, I had requested this to be done on another day as one cannot have the flu vaccine and the booster vaccine at the same time. There has to be one week at least. They prefer two weeks in between. If you have received the two vaccine shots, Moderna or Pfizer, you must wait eight months before taking the booster shot. Check with your PCP if you are unsure. CVS Corporate has given me a tentative date of Monday, November 29th, subject to change. CVS, this would be for the COVID booster. CVS has told me they can offer only Moderna booster. For your information, if you had a Pfizer vaccine, you must have a Pfizer booster, not a Moderna. As new information comes in and we are able to hold a booster vaccine clinic, it too would be at the AES gym. Thanks to Superintendent Bruno and Principal John Briady, is that right, Amanda? Amanda knows me. Thank you, for opening the gym for residents for both events. Sign up online as expected for the booster shot. We will not be receiving the booster vaccine in Connecticut until 9/20/2019, September 20th, and Roberta will assist me with registering those who do not have a computer. If anyone has any questions, I can be reached at 860-916-6122. Thank you, Kathy Palazzi, Senior Coordinator. That's it, Amanda. Wait, Mike has something.
I have just a quick one. We had a very busy day today in Hutchinson Road. There was a tree trimming service that took down several diseased trees, and they're laying all over the place, but they're going to come back and they're going to chop them up.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, I think Scott had something to do with it.
Scott and Eric.
Yeah, you guys pointed out the trees that were diseased, and they did a hell of a job getting rid of them, starting at 7:00 this morning. But they've done for the day, I think, finally, but they'll be back.
So, thank you. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Eric.
Okay. Thank you very much. Michelle Vell?
Yes.
All right. Do you have anything to add, Michelle, in public speak?
Oh, um, yeah, I know that I've talked to the town, Jay. They're going to be coming around and trimming some of the trees. Some of the bus drivers are going to get together and try to write a list of what trees that our buses just about scraped every single day the last couple of years. I guess they call it a canopy. So, we're trying to put together a list of addresses. It's going to take a while, and we know we don't expect it to be done tomorrow, but, you know, we'll provide a list of that to Jay as soon as we get to it. And I know tonight we wanted to talk a little bit about the traffic around the lake. We haven't met-
You can hold off on that because you're going to be able to-
Okay, I'll hold off.
All right, Mr. Yomans, Dorothy? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Okay, good. Still on mute. You're good? Okay, we're going to skip past. If you figure out the mute button, we can come back to you. Diane and Dian Troquette?
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Excellent. Joseph Goodwin?
I'm good. Thank you.
We'll come back to Mr. and Mrs. Yomans.
We're not going to say anything.
We're not going to say anything at this point.
Okay, thank you. No problem. All right, you can go back. I'm mute. There you go. Melissa Evans, you're on the Safety Committee. If you'd like to add anything other than related to the Safety Committee? No? Okay.
My turn.
Okay, Ed Serrisley? You good, Ed? Okay, we'll move on to Catherine Hutchinson. Okay, we'll move on to Louise Goodwin.
I'm all set, thanks.
All right. I'm assuming my 860-208 number is Attorney O'Brien. I know he'll contribute later on, but is that true? Okay. And then 904-382 or 392-5924. Would you like to add anything to public speak?
Some people called in on the phone.
Okay. All right, so I think we're good. We'll move on to additions and deletions. Do any of the members have anything that they want to add to the agenda?
Yes, we're going to add approval of minutes to 12B.
Okay.
From August 30th.
So, do we have, did we approve the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting previously? Or do we have to do that as well?
I do not believe we did. So, we have to approve both sets of meetings, minutes.
And does anyone know the first date in August?
Uh, yes, the first date in August was Monday, August 9th.
Okay. Anything else, Scott?
That's it, sir.
Adrian?
No, I'm good.
Jeff Murray?
Good.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of adding, well, who's going to second the addition? I'll second it, Scott. So, we'll move on. All those in favor of adding 12B approval of minutes from the August 9th and the August 30th meeting?
Aye.
All right. We're going to move on to item four, which is the Traffic Safety Committee Presentation and the Discussion Regarding Andover Lake Area Road Striping. All of the members that are from the Traffic Committee are going to be allowed to participate during this section of the meeting. So, we'll allow Eric to get us started, and then the members, you know, feel free to contribute at this. And normally, for everybody out there, we don't normally allow participation in the select meetings other than the public speak at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. So, we're going to break with protocol slightly to allow more participation. All right, Eric, you're up.
Okay, so we've been having an ongoing discussion about whether we should or should not scrape in the Lake District and whether we should do edge lines or whether we should do center lines. When we discussed it last time at the meeting, you asked whether I would bring the Connecticut State Safety Circuit Rider on to discuss that with you and discuss her recommendations relative to that. And then Jay Tuttle, the head of Public Works, is also here, as is the Traffic Safety Committee. So, I think they can kind of all answer your questions at this point.
Okay. I believe, is Melissa Evans from the-
Yes, she is the Safety Circuit Rider.
Okay. Melissa, if you'd like to participate and tell us what your findings were when you rode around with Eric, that would be great.
Sure. So, yes, I'm the State Safety Circuit Rider, so I work up at the University of Connecticut's Transportation Institute specifically for the Connecticut Training and Technical Assistance Center, which is commonly known as the T2 Center. So, I met with Eric back in May. He reached out. We provide, the Safety Circuit Rider program provides free technical assistance to all the municipalities around the state in regards to road safety, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, et cetera. So, Eric reached out and asked if I would come and look at some locations in town, and we spent quite a bit of time actually looking at several locations. And there were some different recommendations, so I don't know if tonight's focus is specifically those roads around the lake area. We did look at some other locations, but I think tonight is focusing on the lake area, if I'm correct.
You are correct.
Okay, so, you know, based on my conversation with Eric and certainly, you know, tonight's discussion, I can answer any questions that come up, or we can talk about other options. But initially, what Eric and I discussed was the fact that, you know, this is a busy area, seasonally busy area, and that there are concerns with speeds through the area. You know, obviously, even the day that we were there, which was in late May, there were already people walking and biking. You know, Eric said that only was going to increase with the summertime. So, you know, there were certain things that I noticed as we walked around and drove around. One of the things that I recommended, and there was some talk, and I know Eric shared some notes that he had made, but, you know, regarding striping, so, you know, well, first and foremost, if you do center line striping, it has to be a double yellow line, not a single yellow line. But often, I recommend to towns that have streets like the ones in that area, no center line striping and edge line striping only. That is allowed per the federal manual. There are some requirements, but the roads in question that I recommended it for meet those requirements. The point of that is that psychologically, people see a double yellow line, and they think main road, they think high speed. When you remove that and you just put the edge line striping in and you narrow the travel lanes and you make people have to think about where to drive, they're avoiding that edge line striping, but they know there could be cars coming in the other direction, so they tend to drive a little bit slower, bring their speeds down because they have to be more cautious. And then the added benefit of an edge line stripe is that it gives pedestrians and cyclists a spot to stay on the shoulder. So, we talked about some of that. There were a few other spots where there was an intersection, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember the name of the roads we were at, but Eric can jump in. But it was a very wide intersection. We had just come over, like, the little bridge, and there was a very wide intersection, and as we came over to the right, went up a hill. But it's just, you know, there are things that can be done to tighten that intersection up so that people aren't making sweeping turns, so that pedestrians have a better place to walk and to cross. You know, it's unreasonable to assume that there would be sidewalks installed along all of these routes. I think that's probably, you know, not a necessary thing, but providing some, you know, calming of the traffic and better striping and better guidance for drivers and pedestrians, I think, would help through that area. We also talked about another intersection, that's a smaller intersection, the potential for a very small kind of neighborhood traffic circle. I think I even gave Eric at some point a little, very rough draft of what that could look like. And all of these things, you know, the chicanes on one of the streets, but the chicanes, the traffic circle, all of these things, even the striping, I mean, nothing is set in stone, or you can try out, you can try chicanes on a temporary basis, you can try a traffic circle on a temporary basis, and tweak it or decide it's not working, get public input, maybe people don't like it. You know, even the striping, I mean, it only lasts as long as it lasts. So, if you strike the edge lines and you decide it's just not working, you know, as they fade out, you do something different. But so that's the general, you know, review that we did.
Okay, can I ask just a general question so that we can get some feedback? So, are the options, from your perspective, to meet within the regulations, center line striping, a double striped line if we chose to do that, no double striped line and edge line? And is another option just do nothing?
Well, I mean, do nothing is always an option. I don't recommend it, but it certainly is an option.
That's okay. So, those are basically our three options. We could not stripe anything. We could edge stripe, or we would have to double line stripe, yellow, double line the road. Okay. All right. Do any of the other members of the board have any questions for Melissa?
How do chicanes work exactly?
So, chicanes basically are, if you imagine, we call them like a serpentine design. So, what a chicane does is it bumps out, think of like a curb bump out, but this is in the middle of the block, and it's a longer, narrower extension, so that as you drive down the street, you drive out and around and back into it. So, the lane kind of serpentines around these extensions, and you offset them so that as people come, they have to slow down to go around as the two-way traffic. I mean, it's almost, you know, if you imagine like a work zone where they have the lane shift, it works very similar to that, but it's, you know, offset so that each direction is doing it at a different point in the road. Does that make sense? Did I explain that okay?
Is this done with like concrete barriers, or how's this done?
So, a permanent installation is normally done with curbing, and, you know, you would most likely landscape it. You know, there are some versions that are done with just paint. The town of West Hartford actually did it with paint. But, you know, in a temporary situation, if you were going to try it out, you would do it with, you know, probably paint, and there's different things. You can get rubber curbing to try it with. You could just set up, you know, cones. I mean, there's some different ways you could do it on a temporary basis for a trial run. But normally, a permanent construction is curbing and landscaping on the extension.
What do you think of, the one thing I didn't hear you mention, is what do you think of, like, the road speed bumps to slow people down? I mean, I've seen them in Coventry. I've seen them over, like, around the university where you work, you know, on some of the side roads that get some heavy traffic.
Yeah.
Are those effective, or?
Um-
Speed is definitely an issue on these lake road areas specifically, so.
So, speed humps are a traffic calming tool. You would want humps, not bumps. Bumps are like the really small and severe ones that they put in parking lots that you have to go about five miles per hour to drive over so you don't damage your car. But on public roads, it would be a hump, so it would be a longer, less severe rise in the hump. And there are a lot of towns that have them. They definitely are a tool in the toolbox. I will say that, you know, they have what I would consider equal pros and cons. They do slow traffic, but they tend to only slow traffic right at that location, and then people like to speed up afterwards to make up for the time they had to slow down to go over it. I've also, you know, heard stories and seen examples of people driving on the side of the road and on people's lawns, so they try to go around them. I've heard residents complain about noise when their house was the one that the hump was in front of. I mean, there are pros and cons to them, so you'd have to really look at your locations. The other thing about humps is that they really only are effective if you have a series of them, so you'd have to look at the roadway and see, you know, they have to be spaced out a certain amount of distance apart from one another. They can't be on curves or grade, and you have to consider where driveways are, and then you have to consider drainage. So, I mean, they are absolutely an option, and I recommend them sometimes when I think that they're appropriate. They also can be, you can do trial ones. I mean, they do sell rubber ones you can buy and put together, like, traffic calming Legos, and you put them out there on the road, and you can test them. But, you know, I think you'd have to, in order to spend that money for the temporary ones, you'd have to really know that that's the direction you wanted to go in.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Jeff Murray?
I just have one question on this, the sideline striping. I was reading some studies about, you know, ADT numbers, and usually the side striping is usually reserved for roads with a very low ADT count, and they recommend center line striping for roads with higher ADT counts. Do we have numbers for Lake Road and those recommendations?
So, I can tell you that based on, because we have multiple sets of 24-hour data from the speed cameras, and we have data for school road that you can assume all of the Lake District, and we have for West Street, that you can assume pretty much everything in the Lake District has between 400 and 500 ADT.
Very low. I mean, it's-
Very low.
Very low. And well within the federal manuals' limit for no center line striping and edge line striping. I mean, there's other things that come into play with and such, but I think these roads absolutely qualify if that's the direction you wanted to go.
Yeah, I can see it happening. I was just reading some research. It said, like, on these lower travel roads, only about 10% are side striped, and most of them are center line striped, and the ones that are sideline striped have a higher incidence of side swipes and offset crashes versus roads that are center striped. So, that's just a concern I have.
Well, I think, you know, again, the crash rate, I mean, you have such a low volume on these roads that your crash rate is practically nonexistent there to begin with. And the center line striping versus the edge line striping, the recommendation was mostly based on the need to slow people down, get people more aware of the fact that there was pedestrian activity through here, bicycle activity through here. I do know, you know, we discussed, you know, there's some existing sharrows and maybe even adding more of those and some better signage. You know, all of these things together would form kind of the traffic calming that I think, you know, Eric and I talked about being the goal. But again, you know, it's just one of the options. It's certainly not a requirement.
No, I personally don't feel like people are not aware. I think they just ignore it, you know. I think everybody's pretty aware of what's going on down there, you know. They just, you know, want to get somewhere a little faster, and they figure, well, I'm a good enough driver. It won't be a problem, so.
Okay. All right, Melissa, thank you very much. So, and what I'll also do, Melissa, if you could stay on just till the end of this section, in case the Traffic Committee has questions for you or they want to sit there and address something to you, that would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right, Joe Goodwin, I know, is the chairperson of the Traffic Committee. I know most Vale, Michelle Vale is on as well, and I'm not sure if there's any other members of that committee that are on here other than Eric and myself.
Just see where Joe was. He was headed to Home Depot to get something, so.
Okay.
I am safely parked.
You're back. Good for you. All right. So, the Traffic Safety Committee, I know you guys have met. I know you guys have been involved. What is your take on the Lake District and line striping? Joe or Michelle, either one?
Well, I think the sideline striping that Melissa was mentioning, I forgot what it's called, but I think that's very ideal. My school bus takes me around the lake four times a day. I see Jeff out there every day around 6:40 with his dad at the same time, and so I see the same couples, same parents, and I think if they have like a little striping, they know they can like step over into and be as a safety measure for them. I think that's more ideal than something going down the middle because as much as people are aware, when we come around certain corners, somebody is like right there. And I think pedestrians and even the people who are driving, if they see those little white lines, they know, you know, it must be something, especially it's going to take time to get used to it.
All right, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, boy. I parked too close to Home Depot and it connected my Wi-Fi. So, anyway, all right. So, yeah, no, the Circuit Rider information, I think, is gold. Obviously, you know, this started with us, you know, initially going out, walking the lake, biking the lake, you know, the different committee members live on different sides of the lake, you know, so there's a lot of different perspectives. And even Michelle driving that every single day with a large vehicle, you know, seeing, you know, the pinch points and whatnot around the lake itself, you know, all these areas that the Circuit Rider identified, you know, are the same areas that, you know, obviously, we spoke to Eric about, and Eric was part of that conversation as well. To me, these are the least invasive things that we can do. You know, we start thinking about speed humps, speed bumps. You know, nobody wants that, you know, 30-year-old Ford that's got, you know, every rattle known to man hitting in front of their house. You know, so I can appreciate that, you know. So, when it comes to the side striping, I like that idea. Again, it gives that visual safe barrier, if you will, for pedestrians walking. Obviously, folks aren't going to stick right to the shoulder, you know, at all times, but I think that'll be effective, as well as intersections. You know, obviously, with those intersections and the small traffic circles, that can be a concern. Is that going to be practical? And I think the approach, again, being the least invasive that we can, is a temporary approach to see, is there value in this? You know, obviously, if Michelle starts driving and her bus is hitting the centerpiece, whatever temporary piece we use, or EMS, fire departments having issues, you know, then we'll know that, hey, that's not a viable option. But again, you know, temporary solution- Um, but again, you know, temporary solution for that side striping, you know, I'm, I'm definitely for it, so.
Is there anyone else from the traffic committee that would like to speak? I don't think so. So we're going to open this up for public comment because this is an issue that, uh, we want to make sure that we hear from as many residents as possible and before we decide what we're going to do. And actually, before we do, we go to public comment. Jay, if you'd like to participate in this because you as the Public Works Director have, uh, intimate knowledge of what you're seeing out there and then you also know that, what the applications are about, so.
The only thing I'd like to add, um, and understandably, all this stuff, uh, is, uh, budget-driven. We can try some new things for, uh, uh, traffic control, safety. Uh, I have, personally, I will not recommend, uh, speed humps. I have vast experience with those. Um, from my perspective, from the guys that have to take care of them, uh, plowing them in the middle of the night when you're on a 12-hour plus shift and you forget about it and your head hits the ceiling. Uh, the motorcycle driver that's not paying attention and the front wheel spins around on me, crashes. The people that are going too fast and they get the chip tooth. Uh, so there's all kinds of things about that. I will tell you that, uh, I did some measurements out on Lake Road and the area between, uh, probably West Street or just before West Street coming in from Basola, uh, past, uh, Kurt Dowling's house, right in that, that stretch there. That's the narrowest part and at the narrowest point, it's just 19 feet, so you'd have six inches on either side of the road. Four inch stripe, you're left with two inches. Um, there's places for people to go. And, um, again, it's just budget-driven. Um, I did some, uh, got some quotes from different, uh, a couple of different of our vendors. I don't know if Eric passed those along, um, but that's just a guideline that, uh, we can use.
Jay, how, how long is that section that you're talking about that's, that's going to be so narrow?
It's pretty long.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Especially right near Steve Willard's house is really the tightest, like that area, like it's kinda, you, you come up that hill, which is very tight and Michelle comes down every day, but you come up that hill and then you kind of do a little snake pattern in between those houses that are right on the, the road and it's, it is very tight, Adrian.
And there's a lot of people that park partially in the road too. Right? There's not a lot of off-street parking there.
The only other thing I'd like to add is, uh, I've had seniors, you know, ask me about lines, um, just for the visual and, uh, you know, the driver is looking at the center of the road in front of his steering wheel or their steering wheel. So, but speed is slow on that road, so, uh, having the, the edge lines, that could be something. I, you know, um, personally, I'm used to centerline striping and I put my selfish hat on and I like to see that centerline stripe in the winter time because I know my geyser can follow that line and know how wide the road is and I don't have to worry about going, somebody going off on the wrong side of the mailbox. So, that's my take on it.
All right. All right, Jay, thank you. All right, um, anyone else from, uh, the public that would like to comment on this issue? You're more than welcome to do it right now. So, I'll go around again and just ask you if you'd like to comment. If you don't want to comment, that's fine. So Kathy and Mike Blazi? Okay. Dorothy Yeomans?
We like edging.
Okay, thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Yeomans?
No.
Okay. Diane Chiket?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Uh, Ed Serrisley?
Ed, we can't hear you.
Well, I'll have to tell you, Ed was out practicing on his electric scooter so that he can make more use of the Andover roadways and uh, he and his wife are out at the Andover Elementary Parking Lot yesterday, practicing their scooter ability, so I'm sure that some type of striping would help them. Uh, Catherine Hutchinson? No? Okay, Louise Goodwin?
Yes, I have a question. Um, will there be any special type of maintenance to keep the roads clear to be able to see those sidelines? Either let's say in the fall, when the leaves fall, or in the winter, when the snow gets piled up on the side of the roads?
Well, I mean, I can tell you from being around that lake during the fall, you never really have any problems. You see the line striping. You might have a leaf
Yes.
plastered on it, but it's really not a, an issue in the fall. In the winter, you know, depending on how much snow gets, it depends on how far Jay and his crew push it on the road and
Laughed just the right time. Um.
Which one? Who's talking? So?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, I just lost, lost my train of thought.
All right.
Um, oh, like sand. Will there be like, you know how sand builds up sometimes on the side of the roads? Will there be extra type of street sanding to maintain that?
We're going to be using sand this season, except under absolutely extraordinary conditions.
We've been using salt over the last year, Louise, so.
Two seasons now.
Right, but don't, aren't the streets, uh, swept periodically?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about. Not necessarily for the snow. Does it need additional type of sweeping to maintain it?
I'll let Jay handle that one.
I chime in a little bit. So our routine sweeping, you know, we got a new sweeper, replaced the old one. Um, we didn't get to every place this year, um, that we wanted to just because of time and other, uh, projects. So routinely we'll get out there in, uh, the end of winter and we'll go through the town and sweep the roads. And some areas may be, uh, not, they'll be let off for a while and then we'll get back to them. And then as, as you know, storms happen and we get a little erosion here and there or somebody's driveway or whatever the case may be, some, and we'll go out and do some touch-ups. But having, uh, multiple times a year, um, right now, that's not in the, in the cards.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Joey and Eber? Okay, and then I have one phone number over here, 904-392-5924. Okay. All right, so, um, board members, let's, uh, let's have some discussion related to this topic. And so we've heard, you know, we've heard from, uh, Circuit Rider, we've heard from the Traffic Safety Committee and we've heard from the residents who are on the call. So what do we think, uh, what's our choice? What, I mean, we obviously have three choices. Double striped the, the line down the center, um, no double striped line and edge stripe or nothing?
Are, are we going to open this to the community any more than the public that's with us tonight? Are we going to make a decision tonight?
I think we should make a decision tonight, but Eric, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you know, in the interest of fairness, uh, I received three emails that were all in favor of centerline striping, not edge striping. Um, one of them was Kirk Dowling. Uh, one of them, I forget who the other two were, but there were three total that I received.
Were those in the packet, Eric?
Uh, no, they were not in the packet.
All right, and, and before we move on, Ed Serrisley is actually online. So Ed, do you have anything to, to bring to this discussion? Unmute.
We still can't hear you, Ed. I don't know whether your speaker doesn't work.
Turn the volume up.
No, he's kind of
All right, moving on. We've got a lot on this agenda, guys.
All right, Ed, we're sorry. We would like to hear from you. All right. Okay, so.
So, just for the record, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with what Jay had said and I think, uh, generally accepted is the centerline striping and that was something I would be supporting. I just, it's not in common use just to the sideline only. It's something we'd be doing not in any other road in town. So I think just to be, keep everything common, I think would probably be the best idea is to centerline stripe.
I would second that. Um, both because of the, the stuff that, you know, Jeff, you brought up about side swiping issues and things like that when you, when you try to make it more complicated. And also the point Jay made about, you know, we have a very, sounds like a long section over there that's, we don't have room for both, so, you know?
And, and Adrian, to add to that, if we had enough median, that would actually provide some protection for pedestrians. It sounds like in one or two spots there, we've only got an inch or two, so it's really not going to make that much difference.
Yeah.
It's like, there we have yours. It looks like I'm going to have to borrow yours as soon as time will talk.
Okay, Ed, we can definitely hear you now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm still a little technology here. I just want to encourage, can you hear me now?
Yes.
When I think, okay, to the committee and the board of selectmen, just have everybody in the new committee, please read complete, our Complete Streets report that came out of the Long-Term Planning Committee, part of the Planning and Conservation and Development. So there's a lot more to getting people to drive safely and ride bicycles safely around town rather than just focusing on the lake. We got to think globally on the whole town. So all of our streets and implement eventually the Complete Streets program that we have as a report. That's all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Um, you know, I, I understand what Jeff and Adrian are saying, but as far as me as a walker, I, I, I'm, I, I'm definitely, I definitely don't like the double line, simply because for me, the, the drivers think of that double line and they do not like to move. And if you get stuck, I mean, listen, I, I'll tell you how I walk that lake and you know, Michelle will sit there and vouch. I get to the opposite side of the street on the lake so that as I see oncoming traffic, I move all the way over to the other side because I, I don't trust the majority of the drivers to move far enough away from me, especially on those narrow sections. There's absolutely no way, especially with, with my dog, I, I have to. Uh, so if, if I had to tell you what I would like to do, I would sit there and I would not do anything. Now, I realize there's a lot of people that want the centerline and I respect Jay. If Jay sits there and says he wants that for his claws, I get it. But if I was, if I hadn't, my total way, I, I would tell you right now, I would, I would not do anything. And I would let it go because I definitely, well, I understand the edging. I don't necessarily know that that gives enough space in different areas on the, the lake area to sit there and actually walk safely. I mean, I'm in people's yards all the time because it's just either people, how they drive and it's just what it is. So it's their narrow streets, double lining them. I'm just telling you, when I get stuck on the other side and the people don't cross that centerline, uh, that is the worst. So.
But look at the bright side. It's not a lot, it's not, it's not a massive 10-mile lake, so, yeah.
Yeah, but Adrian, when those cars come back and they, they don't move over that centerline because it's a double line, uh, it's, I mean, and then I get it. You can't sit there and, and do a, a, a line and then, you know, create spaces in the line because then you're giving passing issues, but I, I, I'd rather do nothing in the lake area.
Yeah, I, I would gather though that you've never been out plowing. Maybe we can pick you up. Show you around sometime. It's hard. It sucks if you don't have a reference point.
I'll flat out tell you, they did it last year.
Yeah.
And, and that was a new driver on that road. So, they didn't have a centerline in the lake area. I mean, it might've been fading, I guess, slightly some areas, but there wasn't a lot of lines out there last year.
Jeff, just add one more thing. Then, I started October 1st, there's a huge pedestrian, uh, basically rights law that's going to be infecting Connecticut. So, I mean, I think, uh, we should actually start pushing that to residents and giving, giving space to pedestrians is more, uh, uh, and as, as a, uh, as an alternative to this because actually there is a lot of laws that are going to make it illegal to not give space to pedestrians and when you're, when you're coming in opposite directions. You have the right of way.
Threefold has been the law for passing a cyclist for many years and codified. Yet, how many times have you been, I've been clipped by a side view mirror, you know, at least once every three years, you know, ad infinitum. So, it's not happening now. Adding additional laws isn't necessarily going to help that situation.
I understand that, uh, Eric, but there is, I mean, it's basically gives the, this, this new laws basically give pedestrian the right of the road, so.
All right, Scott, you're it.
Um, I would vote for, I guess, since every, uh, Jay, Jeff, Adrian, I've plowed around the lake before. And I would say that Jay's probably right. That, you know, that center stripe in a big storm is what guides you down the road.
Okay, so let's sit there and say we're now double striping the lake area and the question now becomes the budget for line striping. Eric, what is our budget for that?
Um, it's coming out of Town Aid Road. It will be whatever you decide it's going to be.
Okay, so in, uh, the package, we have some information regarding, uh, Jay's recommendation was to stripe Lake, Lakeside, Erdoney West and Bunker Hill Road. Water-based cost is $5,263 and epoxy-based cost is $23,682. Uh, Jay, just as a side, so we understand the difference between the water-based and the epoxy gives us how much time?
So, uh, just as a, just to back up just a little bit, I allocated from last year's budget, um, I, in my, uh, spreadsheets, I put aside $20,000 for striping. So, um, just so you have that number in your head. Uh, if we do water-based lines, we're only going to get a year out of it. They fade. You, you know, we do it now. You might make the winter and then it just fades out from there. So striping epoxy, uh, I've got stripes out there right now that are on, uh, six years. So, and they look almost as good as they did when they put down. So epoxy lasts about five years.
Okay, so right now the difference between the the water-based and the epoxy, let's say is five times. So I get five years on the epoxy and water-based, a little bit less, so.
And it's reflect, uh, the epoxy is, uh, has the glass bead and reflectivity.
Right. So Jay's recommendation is epoxy paint. Let, let me just say epoxy paint, Jay. Don't take me and be upset, but the epoxy paint for the areas that Jay wants to do is $14,612.
I would make a motion to do that.
Uh, it's $22,285.79.
Yeah, it was like 23, I think.
Yeah, 23 and change. Or under.
So I gave you one set of numbers just for the lake region and one set of overall numbers. There is a second company that gives us a little bit of a discount if, you know, the per mile, per line by doing double lines. That brings the total cost down a little bit, but including stop bars and sharrows, it's ballpark between 22 and 23,000.
Again, I'd still make the same motion. I think it's appropriate and I'm a big fan of anything we can do that has safety. So the reflective part is a good idea.
That's just one question I have. Is there any chance we're going to fox seal this, this roadway in the future next year? Any chance whatsoever?
I don't have any plans on fox sealing.
Okay, I just know, I just know School Road and Lakeside Drive was a fox seal. I just Okay, I just know, I just know school road in Lakeside Drive was a fox seal. I just didn't know if there was any. Discussion on the fox sealing the rest of the the path around the lake and Lake Road, so.
Are you sure?
Am I sure?
Yeah, either one of you. You're sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
And then I'll second Adrian's motion.
I'm not hearing anything from Eric. Eric, are you sure?
Not sure. I prefer to fox seal personally, but you know, it's a question, you know, every, if you fox seal. You reduce the amount of chip seal you do by about a mile and a half a year. So it's. It's a trade off between doing a little bit better job or doing more total work. You know, and and it's just a, it's a numbers game.
Okay.
And personally, I think it's right now, it's about trying to get more work done, trying to get our more of these roads. I mean, it's a forty-five, fifty thousand dollar. Bill to fog seal versus getting more road work done.
Okay, and one thing real quick, does anybody on the commission have any more questions for Melissa? Because I suspect she'd like to actually dinner tonight.
I think we're all set. Melissa, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming on and helping us out. Appreciate that.
Of course, not a problem. And Eric, you know how to find me if you need anything else in the future, okay?
Fair enough. Thank you.
Sure. Bye bye. Have a good night.
Cheers.
You got a motion on the floor with a second, Jeff.
Yes, we do. So further discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed? Jeff, uh, motion passes three to one. Okay, so we're going to move on now and everybody from the traffic committee, thank you very much for participating and giving us your input. We greatly appreciate it. And.
Good luck with the well, Mr. Goodwin.
Everybody else, thank you very much. Thank you. So Jay is still staying involved. We have our public work section. So Jay, we're going to help that you participate with this. Um, we're going to go five A mini excavator and compactor purchase. Okay, so who would like to discuss that here or Jay? Jay left us? No, Jay's there.
I'm still here.
I'll answer any questions, but Jay's the primary one on this. He's the one that's using it.
So you want to talk about the mini excavator first?
Yes.
Everybody received the packet for the various types, manufacturers. Yeah, so we started out looking for. You know, an excavator to to, uh, so we could start doing our drainage work. And something that we can do a little off road with. And also at the same time. Doing catch basins. So initially, you know, and I'll I'll take the hit on it. I was thinking a little bit bigger machine. Um, it's always been tough finding a smaller machine that would handle catch basin safely. So I met with another town. Guys that I worked with before and they're running, they were running this TB two ninety Takayuchi, which we presently have. On rental. And they said it could handle catch basins all day long. So we brought it in, we tried it out, we took it down to our pit. Um, long story short, uh, we took the catch basin, the sumps out, which is pretty much the heaviest part of a catch basin. And we were comfortably able to get it out of the truck. And put it in the ground, take it out away from the machine. It would hold, you could lower it down in the hole, bring it back up. Um, is it as stable as a bigger machine? No, it's not quite as stable as a bigger machine, but it will handle and handle safely. And Tommy, our operator, um, very pleased with it. And you'll notice if you look at the different machines of the. Paperwork I sent you, this has got a twin piston main boom where the others don't. And I checked with John Deere, I checked with Caterpillar, I checked with all many of the other ones. And the ones that did respond back, uh, they think it could pick up a sump, but they weren't. Sure. And then the the dollars were different as well. So we're currently renting this machine. Let's see, we're on our. Third month now, I think it is. Um, so we used it at the bridge, we're using it out on Shoddy Mill Road. And we plan to do plenty of other work with it. If it's accepted.
Okay, questions for Jay? Adrian, I'm sure you know more about this than anybody here, so.
I'm actually one of the people that encouraged Jay and Eric to think about purchasing this. Um, when you look at the rental costs over, you know, a four month period, it's what it would cost us to buy it if we bought it over this. You know, over a four or five year period, so it makes sense to just own it. Most of my friends that are doing landscaping, even, you know, septic work have gone to this type of machine because. One of the things that Jay didn't mention is that it's also a lot easier to move. You don't need to do just the flatbed. You can tow it behind most of our other stuff with five fifty, so. Yeah, we have options with the dump trucks to be able to move this around versus go and get the flatbed for everything. So there's an advantage there, but in general, it's just it's the right size machine for the type of work that we're doing a lot of. And they're reliable, you know, so for the cost of renting it, we might as well be buying it. It just makes more sense. You know, I mean, these, if they're maintained well, you know, this should be a twenty more twenty year machine for us, you know. So.
And Eric, if I remember correctly, or you can tell me the rental cost for this unit monthly is.
Uh, four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars per month.
Okay, so we're planning on spending approximately thirteen thousand dollars on the rental of this for three months.
Well, no, but you're going to end up renting it for four to five months by the time you go open season to end of season, so. You know.
Okay.
One of the unfortunate things this year, you know, and it's something we have to face. And it's funny because Jay and I had this discussion before we started kind of drainage system. Season, and he said flat out, the problem with renting these things is you get all set to do a project, something happens. And you end up moving public works and doing something else and you sit the thing there for three weeks. You know, while you deal with some kind of crisis and then you come back to it and you've now wasted all that money. Um, and honestly, we've done that this year. Um, several times we've stopped and started projects because we got another storm, we had to do cleanup, trees came down. So I think it's one of those things that the the problem with renting is that you don't necessarily, you may have it for four months. But you don't necessarily put a ton of hours on it. You know, you use it hard for a week, then it sits for a while. Um, to me, it does make sense seeing how we're using it. And the fact we've got so much freaking drainage work we have to do to purchase this piece of equipment.
And and the irony was, even though we packed up and ran down and did storm work, we ended up using it on the bridge and stuff, so. If we ended up using it for some of the storm work, you know.
So does does the rental, um, the rental payments offset purchase cost, Eric?
Uh, yes, the way it's set up is the first two months get applied a hundred percent to the purchase price. And then after that, seventy-five percent of the rental offsets the purchase price.
Okay.
Yeah.
And budgeted, the the this line item is budgeted for the equipment that we have for. The equipment line item for public works?
Yes, so the public works equipment line item is, I believe, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so the money is there, they, you know, we can purchase the money, the machine outright. Or we can consider loan options depending on what it is that, you know, you want to do.
And do you have the loan options as far as the interest rate goes for it?
So there's a loan option through the company. They can do sixty months at zero percent. And then plus they have some, then plus they have some lease options with a balance.
So zero percent for sixty months allows us to sit there and take this.
Six hundred?
Go ballpark number, six hundred dollars. Is that your guess, Scott? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is it?
I'm checking. No, it's more than that.
What did he say? You're trying to come up with the per month?
I, it says fourteen hundred and sixty-three if my numbers are correct, but they may not be.
That's pretty close. Sixteen sixty-six would be a hundred thousand dollars over sixty months. So I think that's a great. I mean, listen, I I mean, I know Adrian looked at that bill and I looked at that bill and I immediately. I don't enjoy looking at those types of bills, so paying four thousand dollars a month to lease piece of equipment. Doesn't sit well with me, so I'm all in favor of purchasing it and I would be all in favor of purchasing it at zero percent. Interest over sixty month time.
Me too.
Be three.
Use somebody else's money.
Sid.
Well, if if you if you do the math, fourteen hundred a month is sixteen eight for the year. And four months rental is sixteen eight, so it's literally identical, you know.
I mean, it's not, it's not as if it's not a piece of equipment that Jay and Public Works don't need, so.
You know, and we we have options as to where we take this out of. We could, you know, we could actually take it off. Town aid road because it's primarily a road work item expense. We we have options as to where we want to park this, so.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to purchase this so for?
Well, do we want to, do we want to let Board of Finance, we'll make, let Board of Finance make the decision as to where to to put it? Is that what we're going to do?
Sure, let's just let them know that we want this purchased.
All right, I'll make a motion that we purchase the Takayuchi. That we are currently renting, um, and it's what, one-ten? Is that the price, Eric?
Uh, no, I mean, Jeff, the purchase cost. Is ninety-six thousand one thirty-five.
All right, for ninety-six thousand. One thirty-five as as quoted in the packet.
Might I recommend that you actually, because CIP hasn't reviewed this yet? Might I recommend that you just make a positive referral to CIP? Since that really is their job to determine these.
Well, CIP, so CIP several years ago recommended one, but the the balances have never been there to pay for it, so. You know.
And even even CIA, so we're going to personally, Eric, we're going to waste time to send it to CIP. CIP is going to send it back. Just purchase the thing. It's the right thing to do for the town.
Yeah, I mean, this is a no brainer. We're using it whether it gets purchased or not, so, you know, we might as well purchase it and save the cost. You know.
I mean, it's already in the budget. It's just, I mean, even if you sat there and used it from the equipment line item, it's already in the budget.
And again, we're renting it, so we're still going to need it whether they say yes or not. So and it's the same amount of money. I can't imagine they would say no. So.
Adrian, I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion, anybody? So all those in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, all those opposed? No, four nothing. Okay, let's move on to the road work and tree trimming progress report.
Oh, don't, aren't we going to talk about the, we got to talk about the fiber.
The compactor.
Oh, I am sorry. The compactor, the quotes for the compactor, I, what I saw was twelve thousand dollars. Do we own already?
What's that?
Don't we own a compactor or it's just so old, it's not worth?
No, it's a lot smaller. This one's a lot bigger.
Okay.
So. Um, this one, we're able to use on top or, excuse me. On top of our trenches, uh, we did it for our road work. Uh, we. We tried a roller, small roller earlier on in the season. Really didn't fit our needs. We're looking for something that had a lot more hit, so we had some better compaction. The small compacters that we have, uh, basically you got to come up a lot, uh, smaller lifts, takes more time. Uh, this one here, we can, you know, put up to ten inches of material, twelve, twelve inches of material and we can get a good compaction rating.
Without small ones, what, three or four with the small ones you guys have?
Three or four.
Inches.
Inches. Yes. Yeah, as far as, uh. How much material we can put in at a time, so.
Do our small ones have reverse?
No, small ones don't has reverse, little harder use into into it, uh, in a trench.
Exactly.
Small ones are good for patching, paving, little, uh, you know, when you're doing some small patches. Uh, but when we're doing bigger work, this is where this comes into play.
Yes, so Jeff, just imagine being in a trench and you can't back it up. You got to pick it up with a machine and bring it back to the beginning and do it again. Because you can't, you can't, it doesn't have a reverse on it, literally.
And and you got to try to twist it around or you're pulling on it. It's kind of a pain.
It's a worker's comp claim waiting to happen is what it is.
Okay, the other thing we can do is instead of buying this new. The unit we've been renting to do trench work, we can buy straight out for ninety-five hundred. So it's about three thousand. Uh, dollars less. I don't know exactly how many hours it's got on it.
Was it new when it came to you?
It came to us with a hundred and forty hours on it. And. Uh, where's my notes? Yeah, so it's a two thousand twenty-one, same model as the new. Um, it's got a hundred, had, it came to us with a hundred and forty-seven hours on it. It was, uh, just used a few times, uh, different places and, um. You know, I, because the company that we're, uh, this is one of our vendors that we routinely use, buy small equipment from. Rent small equipment from.
Who is this?
Able Tool and Equipment out of South Windsor.
Okay.
They get us so, you know, if we have a special concrete tool, we got to use jackhammers, whatever. They got pretty much anything and everything.
Did we get any other quotes? Have you quoted Superior or anybody else?
No, because I, Whacker is the, is the. Compactor of choice, our smaller machines are all whackers. And the Whacker or this particular model is already quoted, brand new, uh, using Sourcewell pricing. And as far as having, uh, uh, the used machine available, which they had. Um, you know, I said, send it on over so we can try it out. And again, the crew's able to use it. They're able to, you know, produce, get the work done and we can keep moving on.
Can I ask two questions about it? Is it direct drive or belt drive and what type of engine does it have?
It's got a Hatz diesel.
Okay.
And direct drive, hmm, don't, I can't answer that. I don't know.
What's the model number?
It's a DPU. Five-five-four-five-HE reverse plate. DPU five-five-four-five HE reverse plate.
How much of a warranty does it still have?
I'm assuming it's a direct drive, but. Because the smaller machines are, use the belt drive. The warranty would be a year. On most machines like that. And as far as on the used machine, yeah, they.
Adrian, if you got the internet, look up them.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see what's on the spec sheet. And it has all the, all the things you're looking for in a, in that type of unit for a crew type application, so, you know.
And how many months have we rented it from or?
Uh, no, we're, we haven't had it a month yet, getting close.
So according to your paperwork, that monthly rental can be applied to the purchase?
Yes.
In the monthly. Including the, it can be applied to the one we're currently renting, which is the nine thousand dollar one, ninety-five, whatever.
Yes.
Now, now we're down to seventy-eight hundred. For this unit they're currently using.
I I would, I mean, based on what I've seen, I would make a recommendation that we buy. The unit we are currently renting. For the reduced costs. Um, and my suggestion would be that we, you know, take it out of town aid. Rather than the line item. Town aid road.
Why wouldn't that be a capital expense? I mean, that's the whole reason why we have. A capital equipment fund.
Because what else do you need?
Well, no, it's not just that. I mean, on a global scale, capital equipment is really for much more expensive items and realistically. You would put the excavator in the capital equipment line, right? But for smaller purchases like this, you know, I would not look at this as a capital purchase. It's 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 a very small dollar item overall. You know, and it doesn't have an extremely long service life generally. They they generally look at these things for, you know, eight to ten years, max, max. You know, I think that even the, um, if you were to look it up on the tax, on a tax point of view, which we don't have to do as a town, but it's generally only seven years. So. And again, you're, if you, really, that's what we're using it for. We're not using it for anything else in town. I mean, this is really a road maintenance item, if there ever was one. Correct?
Right, I would still argue that that's a capital item, even at ten grand or a little under, personally.
Well, we're a lot more under now, because we're, it's what, seventy, seventy, seventy-eight, seventy-five?
Seventy-eight. Well.
And what's gonna, you know, here's a, here's a, I mean, six and a half, one dozen of the other, but when you start talking about. You know, capital items, again, I think anything under that, you know. Fifteen, twenty thousand dollar mark is is questionable. And I, and I put it out there this way, when you looked at, when we look at capital items for the, for the audit report. If it's under a hundred grand, they're not even interested. For reference. So.
Well, they're not, but we are, but I still agree with Adrian that I, I would look at this as. You could take it from wherever you want. If it's something that Public Works needs and we can, we're, we're already gonna pay seventeen fifty to rent it. We've already paid seventeen fifty to rent it. Let's vote to buy it and move on because you're gonna have more requests for next year. And. May as well make you guys more efficient. We have four employees. We're gonna be as efficient as we can, get as much done as we possibly can, so. I'm all in favor for buying the used piece of equipment.
Our pricing on that's not bad either.
No. Anybody else? And so somebody got, Adrian, did you make a motion to buy?
I did.
Okay, someone gonna second that? I'll second it. Further discussion? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, one nothing. Okay, so um. We're moving on to the next part of this, which is. Um, roadwork and tree trimming progress report.
So the roadwork, as you all know, we wrapped up all the chip seal. Um, we're, uh, got a couple of spots we gotta go back to and and sweep up, because we weren't able to get to. Basically, uh, Bunker Hill, um, we weren't able to sweep that up as best as we could. Um, due to time constraints and bridge closure and the traffic not being on her, on there. Uh, so we'll get to that, uh, prior to painting, uh, any centerline striping. Um. And I'll get that scheduled. I'll talk with Eric about that, uh, this week and we'll get, uh, striping, uh, scheduled. Um. And then we're working on the drainage on Shoddy Mill Road. Right now, we've got one of the guys out on vacation, so we've kind of shifted gears and we're doing some tree trimming, so we'll start that back up and. Hopefully, the end of this week, if I get some time, I can help that crew out, uh, but we're tree trimming and. Handy. Uh, Skinner, Whalen, uh, with Distinctive. So the tree work, uh, any questions on roadwork before we move on?
Yeah, and I I would say the, they're, the Public Works has been doing some limited canopy trimming. And some of the roads where we've been having problems with the buses, smacking tree branches a lot. Um, Michelle was complaining that she had busted her little, uh, whoopee light on the top off of the, uh. Uh, off of the bus not too long ago, her first day trying to drive the roots on Center Street. So Public Works has cut a lot of that back and they're working around the town, trying to just do limited canopy cutting.
And the, so to continue on with the, the tree work that we have scheduled, this, uh, distinctive in cooperation with EverSource. Um, putting some monies together. Uh, and having a collaborative effort to do some. Uh, get some of those hazard trees, a lot of dead trees, uh, prove on reliability. Um. Around town, so currently I had, I have marked. Uh, about five hundred and thirty trees. And that starts at, well, we added, uh, Hutchinson onto the list. Uh, so we did a section of Hutchins. And then on to Handy, so make the loop from Handy and continue right, right around to Barrett, where Bear Swamp comes out on Long Hill. So that whole loop, uh, Handy, uh, Skinner. Uh, Whaling, Bear Swamp. So I got about five hundred and thirty trees marked right now. And I gotta go over and mark out on, uh. Uh, Gillian. And so Distinctive came in today, uh, they got up. Almost up to the top of the hill, um, taking out some of the trees. They got up. They gotta backtrack a little bit, because they gotta wait for a log truck to come in to, uh, uh, remove some of the stuff. At the same time.
Can I ask a structural question about what we're, how we're doing some of this stuff? Um, when we have distinctive or. If you could explain, I'm, I'm asking this because I've had a couple citizens ask, so and I know the answer, so I thought maybe we could have a public answer, so. When we have distinctive, or we have a, um. Say the striping crew or, you know, a, a paving crew in there, what are our, are we still, are we splitting up so that? I understand when we do tree trimming, you need to be around because you're the tree warden. How does it work as far as our crews? How are we doing work? You know, do we have one crew off doing one thing and the other one working with the, the sub, or how are we doing this?
Yeah, so currently, right now, we have one guy on vacation, the other two guys, the other two full-time guys are, are doing some canopy trimming. In some pot, in some spots in town. Um. They started on Center Street today and then they moved over to Cider Mill and then they'll continue on other areas.
Uh, what, what are they doing canopy trimming with?
They're using, they're using the pole saw, they're working from the ground. Basically, they're just trying to get. Uh, they're trying to get those low limbs that. Uh, the buses hit, the garbage truck, we hit with our tops of our, um, you know, the. Bigger trucks that, uh, vehicles that go through those areas that are constantly hitting those low limbs. Um, you know, the ones that stick out from the side of the road that your mirror hits.
No, I, I understand that. I. I only ask because hadn't we gotten a quote to do some of that work, given that it's not really?
Uh, no, not, that's not in the, uh, part of what Distinctive is doing.
I understand it's not part of what they're doing now, but hadn't we gotten a number from them to do some canopy work?
Uh, I haven't gotten any work from them to do any canopy work and that canopy work is low-level canopy work. The canopy work that they would be doing, it would be high-level canopy work.
Okay.
Which ultimately that would be the goal if we can continue to do, we just don't have the, the funding and we. We have to, uh, we have to take care of these problem areas.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not, it's not everywhere. It's, you know, you got a stretch where, you know, somebody's. Tree or shrubbery that they let overgrow on the side of the road that's hitting your mirrors or your car or truck and. You know, it's, it's, I call it cut and run work. You know, we go to a spot, we cut it, we go on to the next spot. Um, just, you know, there are some areas where it's a little lengthy. Um, but it's not all, you know, it's not everywhere.
Uh, we're not doing those, that type of, we're not picking up that type of stuff when we do roadside mowing with the flail?
Again, you're talking about stuff that's, you know, twelve to fourteen feet off the ground.
Okay, you said something about people's stuff growing out from the side, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, no, that's mostly, yes, there are, we do that with the roadside mower, but again, there's. Places, uh, you know, I can, I can give you a couple of specific areas, like, you know, there's a, there's, there's a couple of tree limbs that have been bugging us for. Well, at least bugging the snow, uh, the plow driver for past two, three years, you know, and it just. Nobody's gone over there to knock on the person's door and say, hey, can we cut your tree? Cause the tree's fifteen feet, twenty, you know, twenty feet off the road, but it's got a limb that sticks out thirty feet and it's starting to get weighted. We need to take it off the tree. To make it, it's, make it safe. So it's things like that. It's those little things that just. You know, when we have time, if we have, like, you know, we got a little downtime because we don't have a full staff right now. Well, we can go take care of those smoldering fires. And then as far as traffic control with our, uh, uh, distinctive that's out there right now. Um, we have, uh, our call-in person that, uh, uh, comes in occasionally, helping us out this week.
So, so we're not tying up our regular crew on that type of stuff?
No, we try not to.
Okay. And where are we with roadside mowing right now?
Uh, it's been around town twice. Um, next time we go out, we gotta get, uh, get the, uh, mowing done on the trail and it'll have to. It'll probably be. Uh, what I'm hoping is that we put our, uh, change mower heads and we put the hammer flail on. Uh, which that mower head would be able to take care of some of that heavier vegetation. That you speak of Adrian.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm not, I'm not so sure we can make that work this year, because we need to do a little work to that mower head. I, I'm not quite sure on, uh, what the extent of repairs to that.
So you switched, you switched the whole head? You don't switch the blades out?
No, because the, it, the blades coincide with the arbor on the type of mower head that's on it. The hammer head is a lot heavier blade and you can't put that on the current mower head that we have.
Okay.
The one we're using now is the one Coventry, I think it was Coventry threw away. Yeah, we, we got it and rebuilt it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else that anyone wants to ask about the, uh, the roadwork and the tree trimming? Okay, let's move on to five C Bazula Road Bus Turnaround Proposal.
So, um. I spoke, did everybody see that in their packet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I spoke with, uh, the owner at number seventy-one Basola. They are the new owners of that property. The, uh, past owners only had a car or two. And there was plenty of room, uh, for the bus to share their driveway to turn around and they made provisions to try to keep their vehicles out of the way for the bus. Um, this new owner, uh, has multi-vehicles, uh, he's a hobbyist. Has, you know, he does stuff, so he doesn't have the room in his driveway. Um, so I spoke to him about that shaded area that I drew in pink. Um, it's a perfect spot. We'd have to take out a few trees. We could box it out really easy. And add some gravel and make a perfect turnaround. Um, and it's on his property. I spoke with the gentleman at number sixty-one Basola, which is his, uh, the direct to butter. Um, and he has a fenced-in yard and so the fence, uh, would be close to it. Um, and it's a little downhill, so. If he stood at his fence, even though there's some vegetation in there, if he stood at his fence, he would be looking. Basically at the top of the landing. Cause it, you know, it does go downhill, so, so we would have to, you know, level that out. So make it feasible for the bus to turn around safely. We wouldn't just give them a hill to back into and try to drive out of. Um, so that's pretty much what I did, uh, right now. I guess it has to go to. You know, I spoke with Eric about it, whether it has to go to the attorney, create an easement, get permission, uh, so. That's where I'm at.
The board agrees to do it. I think we should give it to Dennis. Because I would prefer to have an actual formal easement to allow us to do it. That way, there's no. You know, heartburn. The homeowners know exactly what they're getting. We know exactly what they're getting, we're getting, you know?
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions regarding the turnaround or any other issues related to?
How long is Basola?
Uh.
My, my?
No.
That's what I'm saying, I think it was that long.
Well, I know that, I know there would be some unhappy kids that have to walk all the time. Um. I don't know.
Eric, on your striping data that you gave us, is it in there?
Uh, I don't think it would be, because Basola wasn't one of the ones that were striped. But I can probably find you a, a length of that.
Bring it up on the GIS.
Uh, Basola, Basola is zero point three-two miles.
Oh, it's a third of a mile?
Correct. Do you have a cost that you're gonna invest in this turnaround, Jay?
Uh, well, other than removing the trees, it, it would be in-house, um, so our labor's. Part, you know, of our, uh, annual cost, we can use our own materials. We got gravel in our pit we could use. Um, and we top it, so I didn't put a cost together, what I would, you know, as far as any process.
But it's not expensive.
But we got, you know, we got melons to put, we got plenty of melons we can top it with, uh, we have material.
Okay.
You can take the trees down yourself?
No, I'd have to, there's a couple of big trees that we would have to have, take the two in the very front, would have to, uh, I'd have to have somebody come in and take those down. The rest of them we could take down ourselves.
I assume you can pull the stumps with the excavators up, back up?
Uh, probably. Or we'd have them ground. But the stumps are pretty close to the road. I'd be, I'd be cautious on, um. You know, having the root ball hurt the roadway. If anything, because the, the stumps are kind of, they would be pretty much on the outside of either side of the, uh. Of the turnaround.
Good. Anyone have a problem with this turnaround?
The smaller ones we can pull out for sure. The, the two big ones, I don't know if I could pull them out, just because they're right on the edge of the road.
Anybody have a problem with the turnaround or someone wanna make a motion so we can move that forward?
I mean, my, it, it sounds like you, my concern is, you know, how long is this gonna last? House sells and, you know, somebody else ends up buying the house after this person, then where are we at?
Well, the other thing is too, and I didn't mention this, is we have a real hard time in the winter time trying to find a place to turn around up there with a plow. You know, we got nowhere to put the snow. Uh, you know, if you look at number seventy-one Basola, if you go a little deeper, it, the uh, the road ends and it turns into a dirt driveway.
Yep.
So there's a homeowner in there, um, and he's a contractor that um, does various things around town. He says, oh, you can come down and go right into my yard. Well, I'm not gonna send our truck down a dirt driveway that's not maintained, that we're gonna be bouncing along, tearing it up, because he said, you know, the bus can come down in my yard and turn around. Well, I went down there and maybe if everything was improved, but we're not doing that. Um, but there's no, it, we have a difficult time in the winter time, even with the previous owners turning around in that driveway. Um, and then just where to put the snow. You know, you're either put, piling it up in their driveway and trying to push it off in the woods. This gives us a place to put snow as well.
So this is just poor street planning. We should have required something before we took over the street.
Possibly.
Yeah, definitely.
And we, and we have this, you know, we have another issue uh, at the end of Brown, but that, that can be done at some other time. Brown's, Brown's a short road.
So your, your goal is to put this in and level it off enough that you can, are you gonna do millings or are you gonna do gravel?
Both. Well, we'll start with the gravel and then we'll top it with melons.
Okay.
Cause we, you know, we gotta put, uh, we gotta bring it up some, so we're not just gonna put a pile of melons there.
So I'm assuming, I'm assuming if we sit there and we, we send this to the town attorney to get an easement, that easement is gonna pass from owner to owner. So, future.
Presumably, that's the reason why I wanna pursue an easement, to know that if we go to the trouble to do the work, that two years from now, somebody else doesn't buy us and say, get off my property.
Dennis, is that, is that the case?
He's gonna figure out the mute button.
Big ask for a landowner. And is there any type of remuneration or anything we need to consider for this?
I thought he said he was willing to do it. Dennis O'Brien.
Eric, was, was there any cost involved from the town side to the homeowner?
Uh, I have not been involved in that. I don't believe so.
No, the, the homeowner was all for it. Says have, have at it.
But he knows that we're, we're gonna come back to him with a, an easement?
Yes, I mentioned that to him. I said, I said, you know, I'm, I'll bring it forward to my uh, to the town manager and then uh, you know, they're gonna probably wanna do an easement uh, with you.
As long as it's all done legal, legal, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want it to be like a gentleman's agreement or something.
Amanda, is uh, can you unmute Dennis O'Brien? He's saying it's from your end.
I'm trying to unmute him. Dennis, can you hear us?
He can. I'm, I've texted him. He's saying he can't unmute on his end.
Dennis, if you're calling from your phone, just press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, well, he'll end up being on in a little bit. Nope, he's trying. Star six. Okay, all right, well, we're gonna end up asking for an easement. We're gonna have the town attorney prepare an easement and then we're gonna try to present that to the resident and.
Yeah, as long as we go that route and it sticks, that's fine. Yeah, then I would be in favor of it also.
Um, is there any uh, planning and zoning requirements, Eric, to sit there and approve this or?
It's gonna be another entrance on the road, right?
I mean theoretically, we would have to pull a, you know, a permit ourselves to construct an apron on a down road. Um, but we can imply internally for that.
All right, so I would make a mo, what's the street address? Seventy, seventy-one?
Seventy-one.
I'd make a motion that we pursue an easement agreement with seventy-one Basola to put in a turnaround for both um, plowing and school bus access to the, to the road. I'll second that.
Scott's second, sorry, further discussion. You know, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, Jay, thank you very much for sticking with us and all the good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna move on to item six, board and commission presentations, community senior senior building committee. Is there any information that Scott or Jeff or anyone?
Ed's gonna give a talk.
All right, let's go ahead. How are you?
You're not, you're not making any noise again.
Amanda?
He just muted, unmuted. Try it again, Ed. Your mic's not working, Ed.
Still strong silent type.
Your mute, unmute is, is going on and off, but we're still not hearing you when it's off. It's currently on again. You're now off.
And we can't hear you.
And we still can't hear you.
Hey Ed, is your volume up on your computer?
That wouldn't affect his mic.
It worked, it worked before.
It did.
Ed, would you like to call in from your phone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, they got me. Sorry. I have a new, new laptop. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Got it.
All right, thank you.
I think we were hearing him through Diane's.
Diane, you need to turn yours back. Unmute you, yours.
We're getting your volume in his video feed.
Listen, unmute Diane's and Ed mute yours.
Yeah, mute Ed, unmute Diane's. That's how it works. Diane, unmute yourself if you can.
There you go.
Louise, are you kidding me?
I'm sorry, guys. I got a new laptop. I'm still trying to figure it out. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, so anyways, we've got an approved site plan. Brandon, our town engineer, really liked the, the site plan that was uh, proposed. The site plan the committee chose is uh, got a great opportunity to have a walkout basement. It's a change in elevation. The committee liked this site because we have the opportunity to build a full foundation wall in and be able to finish out the basement in the future and not have to spend the money now. So basically, we're gonna spend the money to outfit the whole first floor um, and have the potential for growth in the basement and have a walkout basement. Um, the building footprint is about the max we can fit on the site. It's partitioned on the east and west by the two parking lots. So we have a forty foot by fifty-six footprint. Amanda, you're gonna help out and put that site plan from the website up? If anyone has any que, thank you, Amanda. So if you have any questions, you stop me as I go along. So we went through some evolutions on this. We've been meeting for two years, mostly at the gazebo in good weather. We had some Zoom meetings with Diane's assistance. Um, and the basic footprint was reviewed by our town engineer. Jay helped us find the utilities with Skip Septic this past spring. So you see the yellow staking that's out there. Uh, we know where all the utilities are. Uh, the only thing we would have any big put in for this building is a new septic tank anyway, so we're gonna move. All we gotta do is move the existing septic tank. And this, the engineer that we've selected will, will see that if we can have a bigger septic tank for both buildings, the town hall and the new building or separate septic tanks, but there's plenty of room out back for all these things. The existing uh, leach field will be, will be salvaged and used as is. At most, we need to add maybe one or two more trenches uh, for additional septic leaching. Um, so all we gotta do is move the existing septic tank. Thank you, Amanda. The proposed building is shown in orange. Um, again, it's um, the, the constraints are the two parking lots. Um, and what we're gonna do is, we got two thousand four hundred square feet as it is on the first floor. An unfinished basement of another two thousand plus square feet, uh, which we, the town can decide how we're gonna use that at first for storage or maybe possibly some uh, future offices down in there. Currently, the committee has selected, in our last meeting on Thursday, we selected BSC as the engineering firm and a, another company called M and, M and P or MPN, Moser Architects. Do preliminary floor plans based on the input we received from the community and the seniors. Um, if we can pull up this, the floor plan, Amanda, from our website and Diane helped me get this on the web, on our website last month. So these are available to everybody on the website. This went through a couple of iterations also. We originally had the kitchen on the perimeter of the building, but committee members suggested we put it to the center so that the breakout rooms can be uh, serviced by the kitchen in two different windows uh, for, so you could have multiple functions going on at once. Now, this is by no means a final floor plan, of course. It's just an idea to save us money, to go to an architect and say, improve on this and make it better. Uh, so there's your forty-six by, uh, I'm sorry, fifty-six by forty-foot building with a small, medium and large uh, meeting rooms, uh, bathrooms and office and so on. Um, it's interesting, earlier in the meeting, Mike and Kathy mentioned talking about having uh, flu shots. Well, this is obviously a place where we would be, we would be giving flu shots at some point when our new community center uh, in the future. Um, the committee is currently charged with going out. We're gonna go, try to go as a group to various um, and, and um, Kathy Pelosi's trying to arrange this to get us together for a joint um, field trip to see other senior centers and adjoining towns that are of small nature. Um, and take pictures of what we like and don't like, so that when we meet for the first time with the architect, uh, we can give them ideas. Um, but thanks go to the committee members that worked hard on this, uh, even Adrian, who's not on the committee officially, but helped us with some of the CAD on this. Um, and thanks to Jay for helping stake and out the utilities. Um, and so we, we've, last Thursday, we, we selected mostly based on qua, uh, qualifications-based selection, the, the engineer and architectural firm to do the preliminary drawings on this, to be able to come to a point where we have officially architectural design drawings from an art licensed architect and engineering drawings from the site plan, to be able to go to the town meeting, a town meeting and present it to the town in a professional way by the professionals uh, for input and approval. Um, and by that time, we'll have uh, the budget costs uh, better handled uh, a, a better ballpark budget cost on that, once the architect comes up with a preliminary design. And anyways, it's a, it's a, it's a great site for great opportunities with lots of room out back. We already have the garden started in the back and of course, you know, that's going well and uh, we'll run a water line out from the back of our building to the garden, the community garden. Um, and I don't know, Amanda, if you have any elevations, uh, the, the, they were also on the website. Does anybody have any questions on these drawings at this point? I'd like to give a chance to the rest of the committee members to say anything. We have, of course, Diane with me and uh, we have Mike and Kathy on a committee and our two selectmen, Scott and Jeff. Anybody else of the six of us wanna say anything about these drawings?
Kathy and Mike think you're doing a great job, Ed. Continue.
Well, thank you, Kathy. You're, you're a great, big help on the committee and providing valuable input from the seniors.
Right. I think you're doing a great job too, Ed. You're the exact right guy we need for this project.
Well, we're giving our best shot. Thanks, Scott. You know, I, I inherited it from Jeff. Jeff had it, handed it off to me and I was happy to give it, give it a go. Um, again, I, I think it's, it, just a quick history here. We tried three years ago to get it into the fourth wing and yet it's elementary school. That was shot down, so we were charged with finding a site in this area and I think we got a great opportunity with this building. The building may not look like anything like this, but at least it's gonna be functional and are, we're gonna have rooms that'll be flexible to have lots of different activities in there. Um, and, and so a, a, anybody's welcome to come to our Thursday night meeting, second Thursday of the month. We're always meeting at the gazebo where possible, so come on down to the meeting to give us input. And Kathy is now arranging for us to go to field trips to various other uh, community centers. Um, a, and, and again, this all stemmed out of, this, we've been planning this for forty years. Planning, planning conservation and developments, talked about such facility to replace the over a hundred-year-old firehouse, mold-infested firehouse. For forty years, we've been talking about this. Uh, the long-term planning committee selected this area because the, the survey showed this, this is where people wanted it. They're used to going here at our municipal town center. And we gotta eventually, of course, connect our current functional municipal town center with our historic center. Uh, and part of this is a two-year-old presentation that Eric and I gave to try to make a walkable Route three sixteen. We wanna be able to eventually get our seniors and our children to be able to walk from the Long Hill Ballfields up to the school and go to Route three sixteen and make a, a walking path similar to what Mansfield did at UConn. I don't know if you have those pictures available. I just slipped those in here real quick before I end. Uh, Amanda, you were gonna put up a slide, what, what, what UConn did to get students safely up to the ball fields? We'd like to be able to walk, we'd like to be able to walk from uh, the museum, for example, or the library, up three sixteen. And there's only point three miles, one-third of a mile that's the dangerous curve right here. Uh, we talked to the, earlier tonight in our meeting about shoulders and white lines. Well, uh, obviously, you've got about a one-foot shoulder here and anybody that's walked this knows it's a problem. And we, but we have the room and behind the telephone poles, if you look to the right of that telephone pole, we can, we can easily foot in a five-foot pathway elevated four foot off the road uh, to people walk right in, in an embankment, tuck a shelf in there. It's the next slide, Amanda, if you got the next one we worked on. This is a, we presented this to the um, state representative, Robin Green and Senator Casano two and a half years ago with the long-term planning committee and bike walk and over committee. Uh, and it was well received and the bus driver said, yeah, we gotta do something here because kids are walking down there to get a popsicle and they're already using the road. Uh, next slide, Amanda, just a couple of these that Amanda and I worked on. You notice how there's a pedestrian in the road and you, they, they're crossing the yellow line because they don't wanna hit the pedestrian, yet risking a head-on collision here. Um, next slide, there is a solution. A little path, four foot wide behind the telephone poles, but in front of the trees. Now, these trees are dead, dying and diseased. I'm surprised they haven't come and take the, 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 the electrical lines down anyways. They need to be taken down anyways. Once those trees are taken down, uh, there's plenty of room for a pathway. One more, one more slide, Amanda, which is the solution. Here's the exact same road geometry and I, I've studied, I got three degrees from civil, in civil engineering from UConn and uh, I know this road well. I heard, I heard Jay worked on this actually when he was up in Mansfield. But here's our exact same road geometry as three sixteen. A two-lane road with an embankment with a nice split rail fence protecting the walkway right behind the utility poles. You can see down the street, there's a utility pole and this, their state property here is wide enough to put it on state property without, wi, without infringing on uh, private property, just tucking in a little shelf to let people walk to our new community center. Uh, so I was encouraging tonight, earlier, the, the safety committee to look at this area also. We need to get a state grant. It is a state road and, and other towns, if you're Avon, if you're Weathersfield, you're gonna have this built for you by the state. We need uh, we need our state representatives to back us up on this and improve the safety on this curve. And it's only point three miles. Uh, we could easily do what Mansfield did and that's why I took this picture from UConn as the solution. Thank, thanks for running through those. Any, any committee members have anything to do about or say about our building before Eric hires the, um, Eric's about to hire um, BSC engineers to do a stamp and engineering drawing with the footprint and an architect, licensed architect, to be able to go to the town. and an architect, licensed architect, to be able to go to the town and show them a preliminary floor plan. If not, thank you for your time, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ed.
Right, that, hey, thank you very much.
Now, Eric, was that the original one that came to us last week, or was that the, the secondary one?
The committee, the committee based it mostly on quality and qualification space. We, we are ended up saying four thousand dollars, then the next highest price we got was four thousand dollars higher than, than what we are going to hire. We're gonna get the engineer and architect for twenty-nine hundred, twenty-nine thousand dollars total, which is under the fifty thousand you guys approved for this, uh, preliminary design.
So was this the one you guys originally picked, or was this the new bid?
Yeah.
The, the one we originally picked was the only architectural bid we had. Eric put out his, uh, request to have the second firm submit architecture also to piggyback on as an add-on. And this is the second one that came in. And, again, it's only a four thousand dollar price difference, we are gonna save that amount of money. But the committee liked the websites and the previous projects that these professionals have done.
Okay, so you guys had enough time to review?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from any of the other members? Scott and Jeff are on the committee, so Adrian, you have anything else you wanna add?
Well, Seth did a great job.
Okay, so I don't know if we need a, a motion, Scott or Jeff, to, uh, does, do you need a motion to tell Eric to go ahead and hire?
No, he's already been told.
Okay.
Okay. All right, uh, we're gonna move on to item seven, appointments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed, uh, appointments. Anything, Eric? No?
None.
We're gonna move on to resignations, uh, Matea Whitford, Eric?
Yep, Matea Whitford resigned, she's taking the job with the town of Coventry.
Okay. Um, we're on to item nine, town administrator report.
Okay, Amanda, can I share a screen? Okay, I just gotta find it, I got a zillion things open. Okay, I'm gonna go through this real briefly, um, and just talk about the changes since I sent this report out. Um, the first change is we're up to seven COVID cases in the last two weeks. We've started to have more, uh, community transmission within the town of Andover. We're getting up more towards the average of Tolland County. Tolland is now in the higher category for community transition or trans, transmission, sorry. Um, the good news is Connecticut overall has a very high vaccination rate, Andover's vaccination rate's pretty good. One of our neighboring school systems is closed with nine COVID cases and apparently eighty-nine people quarantined. Um, we do have a flu clinic scheduled. Um, we're gonna talk later in executive session about the replacement for the building department and, uh, the town clerk or assistant town clerk. Y'all know we're doing tree work, Jay's covered that. So, uh, we, let's see, we did get the money for the, uh, uh, the connectivity grant, it's hit our bank account, so we're two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars richer than we were last week. Um, unfortunately, most of it's already allocated to that project. But it's, we should be able to get started on that project hopefully by the end of the month, so that's a great deal. Um, as you know, the committee made a recommendation on the contractor and also on the architect for the community center. I will be working with the town's attorney to put together the, uh, you know, to hire that contractor to do the work. Um, later in the, in the discussion, there's gonna be some discussion over the electrical work in the town hall. I've got a couple, uh, options I wanna talk to you a little bit about. Um, one of them is moving all the electrical equipment, and the other is relocating the oil fill line. I did kind of find a way talking with the, uh, talking with Randy, the building official, where we could potentially rerun an oil fill line. Um, if we're gonna do it at the same time, we should change out a bigger oil tank. Um, so I'm working with Charlie Manicuzzo of M and M Oil to get a quote on what it would cost to do that. Um, and that is pretty much it. Um, you all know, we had, this is a picture of the sinkhole that developed. Uh, you can see where it is relative to the center line. Um, and this is, it was paved today, so it is patched. And later we'll be talking about, uh, Brandon's report and what our options are for reopening that road. Um, the last thing I wanted to do, that's picture distinctive cutting trees that are over the power lines, which is pretty friggin' impressive. That's, uh, taking a chunk off the top of a tree about, you know, sixty-five, seventy-five feet tall. Um, and that's it for my report, uh, and that's the Public Works crew. Uh, their version of doing the same thing with much smaller branches, working out of the back of the truck with a pole saw. So that's it, unless you have questions for me.
Good to see they have some safety equipment on there, too.
Yeah, actually, there, you know, that was the first thing I, I've noticed whenever they're doing tree work, they're always wearing chaps. You know, they're always wearing a helmet with the face shield, you know, they appear to have a pretty good safety ethos uh, within the guys doing the work.
Eric, uh, we got an email from Megan regarding some grant possibilities. Do we have anything that will fit into that?
I, I mean, honestly, I, I think the, the two things that would be possible would be trying for pathway connecting the town hall or the rail trail um, to the, the two, the three, you know, food slash convenience store venues in town, which is something that was proposed, um, in the, uh, the, the complete streets program. Um, it's not something I've thought deeply about yet. I mean, the biggest long-term thing to do would be the connection that Ed just talked about going up three sixteen. Um, but I've never really sensed from this board that there's any actual support for doing that. So I have not pursued that in any way, shape or form. If that's something you guys really are behind, I'm happy to push for it.
Um, given the, the pretty tight deadline that's there, do we, I mean, we would, the first thing we'd need to do is what, try to get grant money for engineering here, right?
Well, it, given that, we would probably use the money to do an engineering study of that if we were gonna propose three sixteen.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, that's been something that's been mentioned a bunch of times by various people. I, you know, if, I, I have no objection to it, I, you know, I, I think it's, if, if the community wants it as a whole, why not, you know?
You will get a lot of pushback from people that live on three sixteen.
I know one of those houses turned over, and when I talked to them, the one directly across there, um, from where Boston Hill ends to the left. Um, and the new, the new residents were actually pretty supportive of it, so. You know? I don't know a lot of the other folks in the area, so.
I mean, look, I, I can tell you that I think it's definitely something we as a town should be pursuing. You know, but I don't, I, you know, and I beat my head against it a couple of years ago, and I didn't really get any traction, certainly no traction from the Board of Selectmen. So I dropped it completely at the time, if you guys are behind it, I'm happy to, to push that along.
Jeff, Scott, what's your take on it? You guys got the email, too?
I, I think it's a great project.
Jeff?
And I think it's a great project, I just think you gotta find out if the residents would go with it.
Right.
Well, I mean, we've had, I don't know, this, you know, we've had at least five people, six people come to us that are non-linked, as, as I would say, as far as, you know, generally on other items, and they all expressed an interest in it, so. It does tie into what we've talked about is building a community center, et cetera, et cetera. And if we did that, that would give a, a link from the rail trail to our, to our new community center when it's, when it's up and running, so, you know?
It's a, it, it is a great idea, it's been discussed, you know, many times. It really comes down to either, is that state property?
Or state property, yeah.
Or is that town? Resident property, I, I, I would guess a good portion of that, it's gonna have to be worked on residents property, so.
Well, there is, there actually is a, there is a right of way there. Um, but that's what the engineering's about, is how to, how to kind of put that all together, right? So. Step one. When we talked to Casano about a couple of years ago, he thought it was a great idea, but he also, you know, said you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do a lot of the heavy lifting, cause the state doesn't have the time or energy to address these smaller projects, so.
To be really honest, I, you know, I thought we met with Casano and, and I, I know that he was for it, but I'm not sure that the state guy, the DOT guy threw his hands up and said it's not something.
As he said, he's, that wasn't for or against, it's really within the, he's, they look for community, you know, community pushes, you know?
Oh, I, I, what I'm telling you, Adrian, is, is three or four years ago, we got a letter related to that whole project. I, I believe Ed Srisley actually wrote to the state and got a response, and it was not a favorable response.
Yep.
So I, but, but listen, I have no problem applying for a state grant to, to, um, work through the engineering part and understand what we would need to do to execute that. Have, I, I would be totally in favor of that.
Yeah, so would I, Eric.
Me also. It's a great project, it's a sore thumb.
Yeah.
You're definitely gonna have issues, but listen, let's, let's, Eric, let's try to find some funding for that, that project. And if that's available, let's do it. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions for Eric? All right, then, if not, we're gonna move on, hold business. Ten A, his discussion on the American Rescue Plan Fund, Eric?
Uh, I don't have any further updates other than, uh, I've done two things. One, pushed our auditor to, uh, do the calculations and so we can understand how much of that is in which category. In other words, um, do we have the additional flexibility to spend some of that money? Um, because we can consider it quote-unquote lost revenue. Um, the second thing is I have been pushing a little bit, uh, looking at one of the needs we have with senior transportation that, and that is a smaller scale vehicle, more on the lines of passenger vehicle or small SUV. Um, and I'm doing inquiries as to whether we could buy an electric vehicle, get in on some of the rebates available today by purchasing an electric vehicle. Cause I think that would be the perfect solution for that, because that offers us the lowest overall cost of ownership for that vehicle. And we're not driving far enough that we really have to worry about crazy ranges. So those are the only things I have going on that.
Well, while you're on the electric vehicle, I'm assuming you're gonna get to a charging station or something where we'd be able to charge it from, for the town? So you can report to us future updates on that.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, ten, B, Veterans Monument Park updates?
Uh, I don't really have any updates on that, Scott?
I spoke with Matt Cordner again this weekend, and he's reached out to the irrigation guy. And the irrigation guy has not gotten back to him. I've been very diligent about this, but I can't get good response. Um, I call and text these guys constantly and, you know, they're both aware that something has to happen very quickly. But it's still no, no date that's really cast in stone when this is gonna.
Scott, don't take it personal, I, you know, I'm, I'm two months past my lightning strike and I still can't get an irrigation guy up here to, to change out a, a controller, so.
Yeah, I'm very, very diligent about doing stuff like this, and it's not.
Nah, it's just a tough time of year, they're, they're getting slammed, they gotta get as much of the ground as they can. And now they're going into, they're going into the season where they start, you know, closing systems too, on top of it, so.
Okay, and Scott, we do know that you are extremely diligent, and, you know, you've put a lot of time into the projects that you're, uh, you're involved in. And we appreciate that. Um, we're gonna move on to storm damage at Veterans Memorial Field. Eric, and then you'll pass it on to Scott, because he's also involved in this, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotta figure out how to get the leaves back out of the fence. Um, fortunately, the fence was not retied down before it got blown out again by this latest, uh, even worse flood. Lucky that we didn't really suffer any other damage to the field, though. Um, the field was completely a hundred percent submerged again, um, which has gotta be some kind of a record for us, uh, in the same year. Um, I had asked Rick to get me, Rick still owes me a, um, a, a summary, an electrical summary of what, uh, you know, what he says occurred there, so we can submit an electrical or a claim to the insurance company. And we're still waiting on the, them to come back and swap the well up again.
Um, Scott, just because you know that field better than anyone, um, that field has recovered well from the floods, and we don't really have any significant issues related to it.
No, they're back to, uh, you know, taking care of it, aerating it, and, uh, they're gonna reseed that back corner. I can't imagine it's gonna happen again, but it possibly could. And Eric, when they fill in by the parking lot, I wanna put big stone, you know, like, uh, three or four inch stone, not small stone again where that, that blowout happened. Hmm, are you hearing me?
I'm hearing you, I'm just trying to think in my head, I'm not disputing you, I just haven't really thought through it.
Just by the big back, where the backstop used to be?
Yeah.
Just put big material in there, it won't, then it won't leave next time, you know? If you can relay that to your, uh, GPW foreman. And I don't think that there's a need to reattach the fence on the bottom either. I, I think that's probably a waste of time and money.
Well, I was all for it, and then I saw it got blown right out again, and so maybe I kind of agree with you.
Yeah, I saved a bunch of those hitches, but. It's just, just gonna get blown out again, and why, why attach it? Once this stuff gets out of there, it'll, it'll go back, it'll hang back down, be fine.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to ten D, the complaint log. Eric, anything you wanna share?
No, some people are unhappy. But, you know, uh, you guys asked to, to see and kind of understand what our kind of normal traffic is and normal level of complaints. Um, that's it, I'm trying to work on the rest of the employees to submit logs, they're certainly not the best at doing it. I'm clearly not the only person that has people to complain to them. Um, you know?
Okay.
Is there any reason for not getting them from other people?
Huh? I didn't hear that.
I, I said, why are we not getting them from other people?
Well, I don't have a good explanation.
Well, I mean, it's part of their job, we've asked for it, what, what am I missing? When you refer, when you refer complaint to another department, do you follow up to see if that department has done what they're supposed to do?
Not generally, no.
Can we, can we do that? I mean, that's the whole point of this, right, is to make sure that citizens don't fall through the cracks. If we pass it off to somebody else, the whole point was to make sure that someone did follow up with them. If we pass it off to somebody else, the whole point was to make sure that someone did follow up with them.
It's simply a question of time, Adrian. And how much time do you wanna spend just dealing with complaints?
Well, I, I would say that in general. You get a certain amount of, there's a certain amount of churn, complaint churn in, in any organization, right? Whether it's a town or a business or whatever. But. If we are consistently seeing a pattern of complaint. Then we have to look at that pattern and say, obviously, we're missing something. We're, we're doing something wrong with our public outreach or. Communication or something. And that's the whole point of this, right? It's not, it's not just about. It's, it's about spotting the smoke before there's a fire, you know, for lack of better terminology. So.
Well, are there any complaints in my complaint log that you want me to focus on? Or do you want me to focus on every complaint that I listed to you?
If we're not following up, then we don't know who's getting, that we don't, that, that's the whole point, right? So if we know that. We've passed this off to, and I'm picking a department, I'm not. Let's say we pass it off to the, the tax assessor, right? But if the, if we find that the assessor is not following up with people, this is how we catch it, right? This is how we address it. If it's the, if it's the town clerk or the building department, wherever it is. This is how we find out that, that those things are falling through the crack and it could be a staffing issue. They don't have enough staffing. It could be, you know, it could be a variety of issues, but that's how we address them, right? That's how we find that there's a problem. And, and so I know it seems trivial to you. But in the long term, as we get some of these bigger fires put out and you have Jake at the handle on roads and. You know, we've got a community center and, and all these, all these nice fun things are sort of settling into a routine. Then you start working on these. Maybe less offensive, but, but still issues that we need to address as a town.
Eric, I think the issue for me is that. You know, while I appreciate that you're doing it for us. Even if it's one or two complaints that are coming to the assessor's office, if it just stays in the assessor's office or stays in the tax collector's office. Or it stays in the town's clerk's office, the members of the board of selectmen are never informed. That there's a potential problem, no matter how big or how small. So all of the departments should be. At least giving us a baseline if there's an issue. Now, listen, every resident can sit there and, and send an email to, to any member of the, the board if they chose to. So, but that's all, I think that's all, I mean, from my perspective, that's what I would be after. If. If we're asking you to do it, we should also be asking the other departments to do it and, and just let us be informed. I mean. There's only so much time for us to, to get out there and see everything and we only see so many residents and they may ask us to try to accomplish something, but. More information on that standpoint is just gonna help us. Anyway.
I, I for one, I'm also interested in the complaints and if they're being addressed. So, and, and I would like to know what kind of complaints there are, what things are happening in town and. If they're being addressed and they're being addressed in the correct manner.
I mean, ultimately as a town, that's what we are. We're a public service department.
Right, exactly.
We're gonna go on to ten E, Building and Land Use Department, the online permitting system.
Online permitting system is up and running now. We still have not converted fully to an online payment system. Uh, that's in the hands of the finance director.
Have you had any complaints?
Hmm, not about that, no.
All right.
Not yet. I'm sure there will be.
If someone is to go in into the building and land use and try to, has there been any completed? Film, forms filled out online so far, Eric, that you know?
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
So it's working?
I mean, it's physically working, yes. The system is up and running and we're only taking. You know, applications via permit link at this point.
Okay, so um, for our next meeting, can you at least give us like a, like a number and then just make sure that we're, we're good? And if you hear of any issues, please let us know. Okay, if anybody, I'm sure Adrian. You're gonna know more contractors that are submitting through that. If you hear of anything, please let us know. Keep us in the loop.
So what I'm saying is on Monday morning, when someone goes in there. What's gonna happen?
Well, they're doing it online. They can do it on Sunday. They can do it.
Right, so how, I mean, how effective is, how, how effective is it gonna be if there's nobody even? Down there to look at what.
We're gonna, we're gonna address some of this later, aren't we? This is a bigger conversation than this right now, I think.
No, I, I mean, I think this is, can be had, I, I mean. I'm not sure what exactly your question is. You as an individual will fill out a permit online. It gets reviewed by uh, the. You know, building admin assistant. And then you pay the fee. Uh, and then once you pay the fee, it goes to the building official for review. And depending on what it is, it may also go to uh, planning and zoning. It may go to the fire marshal. It may go to. You know, depending on what type of category, it automatically goes to all the other approvers. Um, they each individually have their own login. They each individually approve. Um, or send it back with comments. You know, and then it goes through the system.
What percentage is the uh, employee that not, not gonna be there on Monday morning? Does, does it need to? How, how much is that gonna affect? This online system?
I mean, the, the, the problem comes in, Scott, is that if somebody walks in at a random time off the street. And wants to walk down and fill out a building application, there's a computer there set up for them. That can access permit link. And then they can use the scanner and they can upload information. But you're right, there's not always gonna be somebody there to walk them through it at any given time. You're right. Um, but I can tell you that I logged on to permit link for the first time, never took any training on it. You know, and I successfully filled out a, a permit for something. Um, and I'm probably gonna have to do it again tomorrow because I gotta fill out a permit with planning and zoning. A signed permit because we gotta put up a sign for the connectivity grant and that requires a PCC application. Um, so. You know?
Scott, I would tell you that change requires some. Working through it. I think it's a positive thing that this is all going online. I think it'll help us. I mean, but we do have other issues that Adrian is right, or in the agenda at some level that we need to discuss as board. So. Okay, anybody else on the online permitting system? Go on to item eleven, new business. Discuss and act upon the following, eleven A, Bunker Hill Road Bridge Closure. So Eric, please just give us a brief status on the, the bridge.
Okay, so at this point, uh, the bridge is still closed. The deck, uh, the areas of the deck that where the pavement was cut out were, have been repaved. You know, in terms of status, that's where we are. You should, I sent around, I apologize for being late. I didn't get the official engineer's report until almost six. I sent that to all the board members.
Could you read that for us, to us?
You want me to put it up on the screen?
That'd be nice, yeah.
Sure. Just tell me when you want me to scroll down.
I'm good.
You can scroll.
Everybody good?
Yep, go ahead. How many pages is this, Eric?
Uh, three, three and a half.
Looks like we're halfway through. Can I scroll down?
Yes, sir.
Pay, pay attention to that last paragraph, please.
Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions.
Yeah, nice try. Based on the load rating report, appears the culvert specifically pipe two and three did not have adequate ratings. They had a large trucks. Or emergency vehicles based on the twenty nineteen observed conditions. They cannot provide structural engineering related services and recommend that we get a CDOT review and place load limits on the bridge.
Alright, so when you say those load ratings, does that impact the school bus?
Yep. And the town trucks. Right, Eric?
Depends what the load ratings are.
If they can't handle an emergency vehicle, it's not gonna be able to handle a, a plow truck.
So Adrian, you're basically looking at keeping that road closed until the total renovation of the bridge?
Here's what I'm gonna say. If you look at this. This is all based on. Photographs. They did not take a core sample. They did not go down and look at this before we paved over the patch. I can tell you I did. We had liquefaction of the sand base that's underneath that patch right now. Which means we have a garbage base. The only thing that keeps somebody from completely getting screwed, excuse my language, is that we did do some. Flowable fill on a couple of those culverts. But the fact that we had liquefaction of the base, which is primarily sand, by the way, at this point. Is, is scary as heck to me. And it's not just about rain. If we get a heavy snow event and you get ice buildup. On those, you know, or any, any debris blocking up those culverts, we can be right back in the same situation. It's not a lit area. It's not safe. I'm not worried about somebody going in the middle of the day. I'm worried about somebody going in there, you know, coming through that in the evening or. It's a dark event. We're getting going to winter. It's gonna get dark sooner. If it's dark out and we have a problem. All bets are off. And as a town, we are liable for this.
Where, where is the twenty twenty-one bridge inspection report?
It's not out yet.
Well, if it wasn't, if it wasn't load rated in nineteen, it wasn't gonna get better in twenty-one.
Look, I did talk to the bridge inspector after he just got through inspecting it and he said it didn't. Sorry, it's not really funny. He basically said, he was the guy that did the initial, did the inspections in seventeen. Nineteen and twenty-one. Um, and he basically said. Yeah, the, it, it didn't look like they'd had any more problems with sinkholes at that time. Before we had the three large storm events. Um, you know, and he had been happy with the previous repair of that, which he had, had looked at. Um, but you know, he said their pipes are definitely, you know, they're pretty deteriorated. They need to be replaced. Yeah, but they were not recommending load limits at that time.
But, but okay, that doesn't make any sense, given that in the twenty nineteen report, it wouldn't have been able to. We should have looked at load limits then.
Well, Adrian, if you really wanna use that as your criteria. Then you need to be doing the same thing on at least three other. You probably need to be doing load limits on Townsend. You probably need to be limits on School Road. You may need load limits on Bear Swamp. We have a lot of failing culverts, Adrian. This is not the lowest rated culvert we have in town by any means. That we're using on a daily basis. So, I, I mean, if that's really your criteria, you know, we got lots of problems. I mean, drive down Bear Swamp Road, you can see where the public works patched a big sinkhole right next to the culvert. That's been sitting there for the last probably four or five years, which was when they patched it. Um, you know, this is not, this is something we're going to face.
Oh, I, I'm not kidding myself what, to think that we don't have issues. I've full, I've wholeheartedly pushed to get resources to address this. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not blind to this. All of us as a board have been pushing for this to try to get you the resources you need to address these issues.
What's the weight, what's the weight on the fire trucks, Eric? Do you have any idea?
I, no, I can't even guess.
Well, if we, if, if we don't understand what the load rating information means, you know, we have to. Uh, we have to look at Eric and go, Eric, can you get us the information on what the load rating really means to us?
The town trucks are around what, thirty? Thirty thousand?
I'm not gonna speculate. I, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Forty, forty-six thousand.
Oh, he's the guy that could tell you how much they weigh.
So Jay just said forty-six.
The issue ends up being if. The, the, the issue is really, what should the town be looking at? For liability related to those roadways and. the, the, the issue is really, what should the town be looking at for liability related to those roadways and those culverts? Because i- in reality, you know, we may be playing roulette with this, but until we understand what is our liability and how we should be looking at it, you know, we could take the approach of close them now and, you know, we all suffer, or we could sit there and say, okay, we're gonna leave it because the load rating is this and we're gonna continue to risk it. Listen, there's no good solution. None of us are sitting here and I'm, I'm with Adrian, none of us are gonna sit here and say we're in perfect situation, just close our eyes and let's go on about our normal lives, but reality is we're gonna have to sit there and make some some accommodation for the people on the other side of the road, Bear Swamp thing, or not Bear Swamp, Bunker Hill, and go from there. So.
So right away, we can open it up for cars under a certain weight. Cars and trucks under a certain weight, is what he's saying.
Well, I'm not sure that that's what he's saying, somebody.
Well, he said adequate ratings to handle large trucks or, or emergency vehicles. What he's saying is that to provide structural engineer related surfaces, services, and they recommend we go and get some.
And if that was the case in 2019, we've been driving over those roads, you know. We've been driving over that bridge since 2019 with all vehicles. I mean, Public Works is on that bridge doing work.
Do you know, do you know what the interesting thing about engineering occurs is, Jeff?
Go ahead.
They work right up until the point that they don't. So you could take that for every single major thing that's happened. And from a building dropping to a plane falling out of the sky, it worked perfectly good until the day that it didn't. Right? So the reality is, we have to make a decision, is that road at risk, right? Your answer is yes. So how much risk are we willing to take as a town? Because if we vote for this, we open it, if somebody gets hurt, we're on the hook. We are liable as a town. And they're gonna go back to that 2019 survey and said, you know better.
Okay, but you also as a board have a report from the towns engineer stating that three of our large culverts, not including this one, are rated a two, which is poor slash failing. And they are all still open, except one of them, which is on Hutchinson Road, has been shrunk down to a single lane. You know, and what the engineer has said is what he's most concerned about, although it's the least likely event, is a catastrophic failure, you know, of a head wall where the pipe invert is. So what he really wants is to make sure nobody's near the edge of the road, because if you're gonna get a, a, a serious structural failure, it's going to be there. Is there a chance we're gonna get further sinkholes? Yes, but we have never had a serious sinkhole, you know, in that bridge when we weren't basically at full capacity of the culvert. So to me, that says, as long as we preemptively close, every time it looks like we're gonna get a flood and watch the hell out of it until the water comes down, you know, we're probably okay to reopen it to traffic. That's my perfect, you know, layman's. And, and if we're really gonna say everything that has that lower rating needs to be closed, then we need to kind of bite the bullet and do it across the board. And I, I honestly don't think we can, simply because several of those structures, you know, are on one-way streets. And I don't think you're gonna tell everybody that lives on Bear Swamp Road that, you know, they can't drive to their house for the next four or five years until we come up with the funding.
No, but, but, I mean, you know, I, I understand your point, but you're also not taking into account that you to look at the flow of water underneath the, the cover or through the port that you're worried about, right? It's not just about whether you have a hole, it's about what is the, what is the secondary risk, right? Somebody dropping into a, into a, into a or getting a damaged car in a covert, you know, unless they're flying and, you know, your secondary risk is, is the car going into the water, you know? So on, on other culverts, do we have that same level of, of waterfall? I'm not familiar with all of those roads, so I can't tell you, you know? But that's what you would want, you know?
Well, can we also ask the town attorney to do, like, I mean, I am not an expert, do not have total understanding of what the town's liability is related to use of roads and all that, all those issues, so maybe we can ask the town attorney to do a quick analysis of, of potential liabilities for us? If possible.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. Can you hear me?
I guess we can.
All right, I finally made it on. I've been listening, uh, yeah, I'd be glad to do that. I, I would, uh, I think I should be able to research that generally pretty quickly. I don't know all the specifics you know, but, you know, I'd be happy to work with Eric and the, and the town engineer on that.
Well, at least it would help us understand what.
Yeah, I, 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 I get it. I get it. It's a, it's, it's obviously a, a major concern that cannot be, you know, just left alone.
Alright, uh, any other discussion?
You know, how big is that covert and, and what is the water exposure if, if that, you know, if that covert fails? You know? Well, in, in, in the short, in the short term, doesn't this information from Y R C telling us that for passenger vehicles, cars, small trucks can be opened then? That's not what he said, he's getting engineered. It just says it, it, it did not have adequate ra- ratings to handle large trucks or emergency vehicles based on the 2019 observed condition. Right. Nobody has looked at it since this last event.
What do you mean looked at it?
Well, honestly, before you guys paved over the path, we probably should have had, had an engineer look at the subbase and see what kind of condition it was actually in at that point. Cause the subbase changed because of the flooding. I mean, your picture looks really dry. I can send you a picture where all the sand was liquefied and it looked like soup. I went down and looked at it also, you know? We should have had a core sample before we did anything.
I, I'm not, you know, so Adrian, I think we know that the material, the backfill used for this came from Andover's pit. So it is very sandy gravel. It has a very high sand. You know, it was not great film material. You know, I, I don't think there's any question of that. I mean, I look at it and I say the upstream portion of that culvert over, you know, where the patch was applied, which was dug it all the way out to level with the bottom of the pipe. Backfill with large ballast stone, cap it with about four or five feet of flowable fill, you know, and then compact with material over the top of that. I mean, I don't see that settling enough to wreck a vehicle going over that. Am I saying there's never gonna be a depression or a sinkhole there? No, I mean, the whole thing's gonna fail. If you came back to there in 30 years, you know, it would subsume itself down into the stream at some point. You know, the question is simply, is it safe to drive over it, you know, when you're not in flood stage? And I would say probably is, but ultimately, you know, there are no guarantees. And no engineer is gonna tell you a hundred percent this is safe, because they gotta P E. They're never going on the record to say this is perfect.
Well, the reality is, the reality is we're planning on, on replacing this bridge. The question is, can we? And, you know, Eric, I'll just ask the same question I asked this morning, can we do it sooner? Is there an emergency program that we can enter into? Is there some way to sit there and get the bridge repaired, the, the bridge done quicker?
I've asked that question, the answer as far as I can tell is no. You know, you're not gonna speed up the process.
Well, Connecticut, our area got disaster certification, didn't we, from that last one?
I think for agricultural only.
I mean, really? I mean, Bolton lost a bridge, the, how many bridges went in the area for crying out loud? There was a ton.
There was a private culvert in Bolton that let go. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I thought there was a public one also that had an issue.
In Manchester.
Yeah, there's definitely one in Manchester, there was a couple over north of us too.
Lebanon lost a couple, I think. No, small ones.
I guess my question is, is there a possibility of getting FEMA grant money or something like that to address some of this stuff? Even if it's just to come up with the temporary patches, you know? So that they're a little better.
What would, what would be the next, what would be the next patch on, on this bridge? What would, how would you feel safer if we, if we dug up the other side and filled the other side with flowable fill?
Yeah. It certainly buy you a lot more time in a failing event to, to find it and before it became an issue. And I think if you do it, you know, you've got a, we need to put something down there that it's easy to close, you know? You'd have to put a one-way gate or something that you have a gate you can open or close as needed, so that you have a permanent solution that's, you know, having to have somebody come in and grab a machine and move a Jersey barrier every time you wanna close the thing. You may get a storm that pops up or a, a snowstorm. If you get ice pack coming down that decides to pack that covert, you know? You need to be able to close it right away.
There's no gate you can put on that that people aren't going to. You know, I mean, look at all the cones. Everybody threw all our barrels, all our blocks, all our sandbags, all our cones in the river.
In the river.
You know?
Yeah, so you, you take a, you, you take a gate, just like they do on a limited access trail, a swing out gate, right?
And you don't think somebody's just gonna bolt cut that and drive on through, because they don't feel like driving around? Happens all the time.
Listen, if somebody's driving around with a set of bolt cutters, God bless them, they cut a lot. But for the 99.9% of the rest of the population, you know?
So Jeff and Adrian, you'd feel better if we tore up the other side and put flowable fill in the other side and then that would make you feel better?
I would, I'll, what about Murray, what's your opinion on this?
Just listening at the moment.
So what's your take on this?
What an engineer. Come on, man.
Well, the number one priority before was to get it open for the school buses to get across, because we had kids stranded on the other side. And apparently from this report, it does look like the school buses can get through. So I don't see what opening, right? I don't, you know, I mean, opening to a few, few passenger vehicles and that line, the buses and the, I mean, I mean, it's gonna be a matter, I mean, we can open it, but you know, we know damn well oil trucks and stuff are gonna go across there. We, we know that. If we open it, it's not gonna be, we can put a limit on all, all we want, but people are still gonna drive over.
Well, let me, I mean, then this goes into what Attorney O'Brien would do. What if we put a sign up that said, you know, limited risk, limited exposure, I mean, state, I see those signs on the road all the time.
Exactly, yeah.
Limit on it, put a low limit on it and somebody exceeds it, I guess, and drives over and causes damage or falls in. You know, there was.
Well, the problem with load limits is it's not that truck driving over that's the problem. Right, it's, they caused the damage and the next person ends up getting in front of it.
And they made, they made it over.
Right.
I mean, I kinda like the idea of keeping it one way and putting stop signs on either side. I mean, that way it would limit the speed going across that area. I mean, if we just open it fully and let people come flying up and down the road. I mean, if there is a sinkhole develops, that could be a problem. I mean, if it's a, if it's a stop sign and people are gonna be going a little, like, you know, much lower speed, the, the, the risk of damage or an accident would probably be much less.
Yeah. Still, we'll have to use one of, of the serpentines. What was the term that we had?
You said?
Trican, she came. I, I, I actually thought about building a trican out of the mafia blocks and make them go really slow, make a big S turn on it, so they couldn't go over it fast. That's not a bad idea. If you do
one lane in the center of the bridge, stop signs on either side, and you put some way to close it off quickly if you need to.
And somebody monitoring it on a daily basis or weekly or storm event basis.
I mean, quickly, I wouldn't even mind doing sawhorses with road closed. I mean, we did that on Long Hill, and if somebody wants to drive through the water, that's, I mean, with a road closed sign right there, then that's their, that's gonna be their prerogative.
So, I mean, if you look at the motions I sent you, my suggestions were basically that you reopen it as one lane, but, you know, edged towards the upstream side, so you're mostly driving over the, the repaired section and that you close it preemptively whenever there's a flood warning for the town.
You can't just do flood warning, you're gonna have to do winter storm events too.
A storm event.
Why? It's more of an issue as you start getting into spring and you get, you know, that heavy of.
Any storm event.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to be monitored.
I think you gotta define storm event. If you get four inches of snow, do you want the bridge closed? Or do you want, when the water's coming up?
Just monitor, if you get 16 plus, you know?
Monitor it. It's just gonna be monitored. There's a lot of eyes on that bridge.
There's a lot of longer.
There are a lot of eyes, there are a lot of people looking at that bridge. There's a lot of selectmen that are looking at that bridge, there's the town administrator looking at these bridges, all of Public Works looking at that bridge. Listen, you, you know, we have to understand our liability and we have to understand the risk that we're willing to take. If we're all not willing to take a risk today, then keep the road closed. Simple as that, just, you gotta, you gotta understand what that risk means, and I, I agree with Adrian, it doesn't fail until it fails. Okay? I mean, if we're gonna apply a 2019 report, then we're all derelict in our duties not shutting it down in 2019. But it didn't fail. So, we got off.
Actually, it did, there were sinkholes in it in 2019 that were repaired.
And we fixed them, that's right.
Yeah, we went down and took pictures that time too.
So if we're, if we're not all comfortable opening the bridge, I mean, Eric, other than inconveniencing the residents that live on Bunker Hill, right? What, what are we keeping it closed, what are we? You know, what are we really doing? We have.
Public Works has to, Public Works has to drive around to go plow it. And they cannot have their plows down while driving through another town. So they're gonna have to limit their plowing, most likely, until, they, they're not gonna be able to deal with like an overnight plow. They're gonna have to wait and kinda hit it all once in the morning.
Eric, in, in the second thing that's an issue is that with that bridge closed, we're uh, essentially every time we get a emergency service or a fire request. Uh, essentially, every time we get a emergency service or a fire request. We start both the Coventry ambulance and the Coventry Fire Department as well as our own on the same time. Because oftentimes, they're gonna have a much faster response to cover. So we enact mutual aid, uh, more often covering our section of that. So that's the other thing.
Okay, yeah. Since you dealt with that, Eric, can we potentially ask Coventry why we're having this issue with the bridge? If there's a potential that they could plow that side of Bunker Hill and what would, what would be involved with that?
I mean, that would be a Jay question. Um, we certainly can propose that to them, but. You know? Jay, you wanna weigh in on that?
I apologize. I heard my name. I was on the other side of the room. What was the question?
The question was, is it possible to ask Coventry if they would plow the Bunker Hill section of that road down to the bridge?
I, it's possible. I can tell you what their answer's gonna be.
Go ahead. Let's hear it.
It, they would not be able to do it. They, they could probably help us out, you know, if we had a, a breakdown for a storm or something, but on a routine. That would be, uh, that would be quite a bit more for them to do. I mean, I could certainly ask.
No, Jay, but you also.
We might have.
Jay, I brought up your concern about, you know, the fact that your guys can't put their plows down to go up there and plow. You know, because they're on somebody else's towns, you know, road. So. What about waiting till the, you know, waiting till you're on daylight and, you know, or until Coventry has caught up on that road? And then making the run up there to do Bunker Hill. Unfortunately, you're not gonna be able to keep up with it, but you can still get it done at the end of the storm.
Yeah, that, well, I could tell you that might work in a small storm. Uh, problem is, number one, it's Bunker Hill. Uh, and it's gonna be glare ice and you're not gonna get anywhere and nobody's gonna be. They won't be able to go anywhere.
Down that hill.
And, and in a large storm, you wouldn't be able to push the snow. Just, you know, it'd be so packed. You'd be dealing with snowpack. Uh, it'd be.
You mean, because residents would be driving on?
Yep. Yep. And then, and then you're gonna be dealing with accidents because people would be sliding all over the place without an untreated road.
Okay. This is, well. And, and how, how, what is the distance that if? Coventry allowed you to keep your, your plow down, what is the distance you'd have to travel over Coventry roads to get to Bunker Hill?
Oh, boy. Well, I'd be going Parker Bridge. So Parker Bridge, as long as that's open. Um, but Parker Bridge around, that's.
Five or six miles.
Two, two or three miles, probably. And then if that's not really accessible, then we'd be going Skinner, South Street. Uh, to bunker.
Okay, so let's, let's find a bridge solution that we can all live with that are.
What if we, what if we tore? Again, and then, uh, put flowable fill on the other side.
You asking me?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Um. Yeah, we could, I mean, we could certainly do that. Um, you know, it's, we'd be saw cutting and doing the same thing we did, uh, the last time. Opening up the other half.
And how long did that take, Jay?
Uh, would we, well, we had that done in, um, I don't know, we had that done in a few days. And then we'd have to bring back the paving company back again.
Yeah.
How, how much of Parker Bridge is Coventry and how much of is it ours? Is it all Coventry?
The only section of Parker Bridge that ours is that first section off of Route Six. The part that's, uh, was chip sealed a year ago.
Yeah, we own about one five, you know, miles of Parker Bridge. The rest is not ours. Okay, so. How much, point five, you said? Half a mile?
No, not even that.
One five. All right, well, if you take all of Parker Bridge, it's two miles.
Yep. And then you got the Coventry section of Bunker Hill. So Parker Bridge. To. Bunker Hill on Coventry side, then you gotta take the hard left. And then travel that section to get to, before we can drop our plow.
Okay, so again, let's find, uh, a, a workable solution for everybody on this board related to liability. And opening that bridge back up.
So one of, one of the things that, uh, if I might, uh, one of the things that Eric and I talked about. And I was listening in on you guys' conversation about the limited liability and whatnot and, uh. Uh, making a restricted lane. And I, you know, I gave this some thought, too. And we gotta make a, if that's a consideration, if we make a restricted lane over the bridge, more toward the center. Um, if we went and bought, because we don't really have enough, um, waste block right now, we could go get some more. They're relatively cheap. Um, we could make a tight single lane. And keep it, like, as Eric said, a little bit more towards the repaired side of the roadway. So people actually do have to stop. It wouldn't be like we had it before when it was one lane. It was, you know. Most everybody kind of yielded as a stop. They didn't really stop. Um, and if we, we paint, uh, the, uh, waste block. Um. You know, so it's visible at night, plus put the cones and, you know, things like that along the way. And make it so it's visible for everybody. Uh, and basically, people do have to stop. And that way, if something does come up, we can easily move things aside, get it repaired. Um, do whatever we need to do. Uh, and as far as what Adrian's concerned was about closing the bridge, we can just take one block. On either end, rather than, you know, three or four on either end, like what we do like right now, because a gate would be hard to. You know, somebody's gonna go through that, would, they'll just drive through it. Um, but we could, if we do have to close it, then we could just put one block up on either end of a restricted lane. Just food for thought.
How much, those blocks are how much, Jay? How much they weigh each one of those?
Those blocks are, I think they're like thirty-eight hundred pounds.
And you'd be using how many blocks?
Well, we probably got enough to make a restricted, what is there out there for?
I think Scott's point is that we're putting as much weight on the bridge as would be if you had it open.
Exactly. Two, two blocks, it's, you know, a big car or a small truck.
Yeah, so if you need six blocks to cross the bridge on either side, right?
Yeah, you're, you're spacing them out.
Thousand pounds, it's forty-eight thousand pounds worth of weight.
Yeah, you're spacing them out. And it's, it's not like you're, uh, concentrating at all the weight in one spot.
Right, and it's not like a freestanding bridge. A culvert has multiple points of contact, essentially. So the fact that you're loading culvert one doesn't really affect the structural capacity, culvert number three anyway.
Okay. True.
It still doesn't make comments, then.
I, I, I would still vote for digging it out and filling it with flowable fill again and. Go that way so that everyone is satisfied.
You mean, do on the other side, Scott, right?
Exactly, yeah. I, I would feel better if it was done that way on myself. Then we don't have to worry about it. Then we can open it up with one lane and everybody. You know, one lane and we don't have to worry about it. Safety, we could put a sign up. Dennis can tell us what kind of sign we need to put up to reduce our risk. And, um, go that way.
What do we spend on flowable fill? What, we are under twenty for that, right? That repair? Jay?
I didn't get the bill yet. It was a hundred, supposedly, uh, he told me it was like a hundred and ten dollars a yard. We put in, uh. Twenty-five yards, I think.
So twenty-five hundred plus paving, you got another grand, right?
Yep. Uh, and then, um. Yeah, a little bit of fabric. We bought a roll of fabric that was, uh, yeah.
Fabric, it was three hundred bucks.
It's under five grand.
Well, you still, you still should have fabric left over from that, right?
Uh, no, we used that on the, uh. Uh, because we use some, we had a partial roll that we started with and we ended up using most of that leftover fabric on our drainage job.
Yeah, but you said you want a new roll.
Yeah, I know, but I bought a new, I, I used. A half roll that we had, plus I bought a new roll, and the roll that we bought, we've. Used it on the job, plus I used it on the drainage job.
We used three hundred linear feet of fabric? Holy cow.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, it was a deep wrap on those bridges.
Yeah.
And then, and then on the wrap for the drainage, we, uh, we wrapped quite a bit of it.
If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do this, and I, I actually like your idea, Scott. Instead of using that crappy sand, let's get some crush material in there or something.
Well, Adrian, we start, we, we dug it all out. Removed the material that was there, the existing material. And I put, uh, fabric, I've, uh, right to the bottom. And then I puts, we put six-inch rip wrap. A layer, about, you know, a foot, eighteen inches thick, whatever. Um, then we put a little bit of two-inch stone, blended it in, then we did another layer of wrap. The, the heavy modified, another little, uh, layer of two-inch. So it's about two, three feet thick of stone. As a, as a base for the, uh.
I thought Eric had said that we got. We got the material from the, the town travel bank.
Oh, above the flowable fill, yeah.
Original, the original material that that bridge was built with. Was the, I'm assuming the town of Andover's material when they originally built that bridge. That's what's there now. The stuff that we dug out. And where we put the flowable fill in, we put the wrap in first and the two-inch stone, well, fabric. Wrapped all that up and then I put the flowable fill on top of that. But we only did half the bridge, a little better than, yeah, about half the bridge, the width.
So we, we have to, we have to, if we're gonna go this route, right now, we have to decide what we're gonna put in for material. To ease Adrian's mind. And sealing it up, it, it, right after it's done. So if it rains or there's another storm event, that it's sealed up and it doesn't get contaminated with water.
Yeah, I, I would second.
The, the stuff we put in wasn't affected by this last storm. The wrap that we put in, the flowable fill, was not affected by the storm that we, uh, that put in. It just washed some of the material at the top. That sinkhole was, is coming from that Adrian was speaking of, that little bit, uh, that happened was. Uh, little further in, going, going, uh, the other way.
Yeah, and I guess our point, and what to Scott's point and what my concern is, is we don't, we can't see what's happening underneath there. But we know the material is garbage that, that wasn't replaced, right? And it was, it was pretty liquefied after that storm. So I would feel better if we did flowable fill on the other half.
Okay. Actually, if you just filled the thing with flowable fill, I know it's a lot of flowable fill, but filled the whole thing, capped it right away. That would be the best way to do it.
Well, that was, that was some of the concern about just using flowable fill it all the way to the bottom. Because flowable fill structurally doesn't, uh, it still can get disturbed. It's not like, uh, it's not like concrete. It's not like, uh, Portland cement.
It's like a wet mason cement.
Well, a lot. It's just not as firm, it's not even as structural as, uh, Mason cement.
Right.
No, it's not. You're right. So.
That's the wet mason cement is what I'm saying.
Just, just do what you did on the, do what you did on the other side. And then I would, if you, we do that, I would be fine with a one lane with, you know, a limited access so they had to stop.
Okay.
So I would agree to that.
So it's Monday night, you said two days, so by Thursday we can open it?
Uh, yeah, it'd have to wait till next week. Because I don't have the manpower right now. Because we got that tree job going. I'm still marking trees. I mean, we could get started on it. I can have the guys, uh, prep. But until, until, uh, I can dedicate some time myself being there.
The thing, though, we also don't want it open if we got rain coming. So.
Right.
So wait until you have the people and then do it.
Yeah, how much rain? That's the other question you guys gotta, you know, if it's just gonna be a, a, uh.
That, that's.
I don't know what a, I don't know what a regular rainstorm is anymore these days.
No, but listen, we're, we're trusting you to make that judgment. We're just reminding you that don't do something. That's not rational or smart because you feel like we're pushing you.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We're not pushing you in that sense. We're just.
Like, if you're gonna have a rainstorm, Jay, you could throw a big tarp over the whole thing. If, if you got it all filled in, you're waiting for Abby to come by, then you put a big tarp over, keep the water out of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I honestly don't think the water from the top. You know, is the issue.
That didn't.
The issue is when the water's over the freaking bridge and the entire thing's underwater. That's a problem, you know?
Well, Adrian's worried about.
Here's the thing, here's the, hearing that you two are both missing. If you get water saturation from the top. And it does, it's got nowhere to dry, too, because you cap it. Then the next time you have a water event, you're more likely to have an intrusion quicker. You've saturated the base. And then saturating that from the top. Some of the fines out of the material. You, you've started the, you, you start the deterioration. So although it doesn't look like an issue, it is an issue, you know?
Yeah.
It's the beginning of a problem. It's not the end of one.
Oh, okay, so, so if the issue, if the real issue that we're, we're trying to address here is, do we want Public Works to sit there and do the renovation on the other side? To attempt to try to get this open as soon as possible. I, I, I would be all for that with. The caveat that the town attorney still, uh, goes through and lets us understand our liability issues. So that we can minimize our liability and when we, when and if we do reopen.
Right.
Okay.
And we still put some type of restriction. You know?
And, and so Jeff, Jeff, another thing that we have to decide right now is that this, we, we're not gonna wait until next month. Meeting. We can have a Zoom call, we can have a Zoom call with all of us together at a moment's notice and, uh. Get, talk about the opening back of the bridge. We don't need to wait a month for this.
Okay, so.
But you can have a Zoom call with twenty-four hours notice if it's been properly noticed.
Okay. Twenty-four hours notice.
Well, okay, so let, let's sit there and vote on that right now, to sit there. And if that's the decision that we need to make to get this moving along and reopened, I am all for it.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we empower Public Works to, um. Make the necessary repairs on the other side using the fold-to-fold method they used on, on the, on the previous sinkhole. And then recap as needed. Reduce the bridge to one lane. With low restrictions and proper signage and that refer the matter to town attorney to address liability.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, we do not need further discussion, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all righty. Uh, new business B, uh, there is a Tuesday, September twenty eighth special town meeting for the election of the region eight RAM board of education member and related to the town ordinances. That information I do believe was in our, some of that information was in our packet, there's two candidates that I know of, and there I know is the ordinance, I apologize, this is probably on me, I did receive something related to ordinances earlier in the day. I need to forward it to you, so yes, we're gonna have to sit there and deal with some, uh, the ordinance issue.
If I may, uh, if I may, Mr., uh, first selectman.
Sure, go ahead.
That item that you got today was probably what I sent you, that Carol Lee and I had worked on, uh, to create a, an agenda for that special town meeting, in order for that to go forward, you have to approve that agenda, which includes all those ordinances and that particular election, and send it to town meeting on the, uh, twenty-eighth, and that paperwork was, uh, you, you have it, Eric has it, uh, Carol Lee has it, I have it. Um, it's simply an agenda, and it just needs the approval of a majority of the, of the board of selectmen.
So if you all look at the motions that I sent you, uh, as possible motions to make, the, the back, the bottom of that was the document labeled special town meeting Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, blah, 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 with all the details. So you should all have a copy of that, as written by Dennis.
Uh, with, and, and the town clerk.
And the town clerk. Ablely assisted by the town clerk.
Absolutely. I will, by the way, if you wish, be happy to attend that meeting. That's an in-person meeting, I believe it's been set up, and, um, I'll be happy to attend it and to advocate, uh, and, and to explain all the ordinances, uh, so that the public will, uh, better understand, uh, you know, what they're at, being asked to vote on.
Jeff, did you find them yet? Is there like a heading that we can put them all together?
Say it again, Scott.
Is there a heading on Dennis's ordinances that we can just note in a, a motion?
We've had the, um, I mean, this motion should be related to, uh, the acceptance of the agenda for the special town meeting. The ordinances have been, you know, we approved the ordinances our last meeting, didn't we?
Yes, you did.
Did, yep.
Yeah, so wha- what Dennis is asking us to do is to approve the agenda for the special town meeting.
So that, uh, the town clerk can publish it as, as required by law.
Okay.
Right, which you would need to do pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it had, this pretty much would have to be done tonight or very soon.
So let's do this, unless somebody has a problem with it as written, anybody?
Approve the agenda for a special town meeting on September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I'll second that, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Jeff Murray, you good?
I heard him say aye.
Okay, good. And here, so, um, we'll move on. So eleven C, the RAM multi-use turf field project.
So you don't have to approve of that going to referendum, because you have no right to block it from going to referendum. Just notifying you that they have told us that it will go to referendum on November, I think, second. Um, you as a board may weigh in on your opinion of whether you think it should pass or fail as a board, if you so choose, or you can stay silent.
So we have till our next meeting to decide what we choose to do. So you can put this on the next agenda, next, our next meeting agenda.
Can you write us up a letter? Eric?
I don't think you want me writing a letter.
So let's sit there and, and, and address this, uh, offline, and then we'll sit there and make a decision as to what we wanna do with our next meeting. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, eleven D, the request for proposal for cleaning services.
So the only thing I wanna say is that the RFP for that closes tomorrow. Um, you know, we've, I've given sidewalks to, I think, eight vendors, seven vendors at this point. Um, we can also consider if we want to pursue hiring uh, Hebron's guy as our building maintenance guy, he would be willing to take on the cleaning also. So depending on what the RFPs come back, it may choose, it may be more cost effective to just hire him as an employee. The reason why I wanted to ask the question of you before I pursued that, because you made it clear initially as a board that you wanted somebody that was a handyman that would be on a ten ninety-nine, and the guy from Hebron is not interested in being a ten ninety-nine employee, he doesn't wanna have to deal with that, um, we would have to just hire him and put him on the payroll, um, as a part-time employee, ten hours a week, with all that in pit tails, if that's an approach you want to consider. I can certainly pursue it with him. Um, or I know Adrian wanted to be in on the interviews, bring him back in an interview, make him an offer, if you want. Um, but we should at least wait until the RFPs close, and we know what those costs are gonna be also.
He's a, he's a really good guy, Adrian and Jeff.
Oh, you know him?
Yeah, I do know him, and he's very highly regarded and respected in the town of Hebron.
So Eric, you interviewed him?
Uh, yeah, we, we talked for a while about, you know, the potential of taking this on. I was also trying to convince him to be our animal control officer, but, uh, I wasn't successful in getting that.
And so what's our, what's our risk is that we hire him for a, a short period of time and sit there and, and and hire him as employee, and if he likes it, he likes it, if he doesn't, he, he doesn't, is that our risk?
Yes, I mean, the, the question becomes, you as a board were kinda adamant that you wanted him just a contractor as a ten ninety-nine employee, and that's not something he's gonna go for, I, I personally think it's probably the most cost-effective way we can do this. Um, you know, but.
But, but again, he doesn't wanna be ten ninety-nine.
Right.
Well.
Doesn't have a side business, he, it's too for him, um. Concern of having a ten ninety-nine person is, if we're paying somebody, then we, we, we're not required to give them a certain number of hours, if we're not ten, uh, honeying somebody, then we have a, a fixed asset risk, you know, a fixed risk, so.
I mean, I'm assuming that Eric is gonna sit there and say, here is the project, and then manage the amount of time that he invests in that project, right? It's actually even easier.
I mean, we certainly have no shortage of projects we could set them to work on. Uh, I'm not concerned with that, it's just whichever approach we wanna go. Do we wanna replace a cleaning service and have a separate ten ninety-nine handyman? Or do we want to try for one employee that's a more traditional building custodian? That's it. Personally, I would probably try for the building custodian, but I don't wanna say one way or the other till I see what all the cleaning bids come back, if they come back in really high.
So, all right, so given that, can we look at this, I mean, I think we have enough, we, it's ten, pushing ten thirty, so, we table this for a week and a half, hopefully we can uh, we open the bridge at that point, and then address this, we'll have the bids in at that point.
Yeah, when will the bids be in?
He opens them tomorrow, closes tomorrow.
So just see what that is first, and then see if he'll do it for the same price that they'll do it for.
Well, let's have a conversation about it as a group.
Right, that's a good idea, Adrian.
Hey, great.
These things going, move, move all these to solution.
Yeah, so Eric, if bids in, if you shout to me, just, when are you trying to, wanna try to do an interview, and we'll, we'll schedule it? You know, first thing in the morning or later in the afternoon works for me. He's done over at Hebron at, like, what, two thirty or something?
Three.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna.
If you can do something around four, four thirty would be great.
We're gonna move on to eleven E, the request for proposal on the town hall electrical work.
Okay, so the town hall has a bunch of stuff it needs to do for electrical work. Um, I asked, uh, or a while back, Jeff Murray had asked to review that when we talked about it. So I sent him the RFP I was proposing. He had some concerns based on the location of the oil fill pipes. So I reached out to the building inspector, you know, I took a bunch of pictures, sent the building inspector, um, and had a conversation with Randy about what we could do about it, Randy's conclusion was he certainly would not permit a new electrical panel in that location, because it is clearly, uh, illegal the way it's done now. Um, but he said he probably would let it go as an existing condition. Um, you know, if he had to weigh in on that as a building official. Um, I also spent a bunch of time, you know, trying to understand what the clearances had to be between oil fill pipes and windows and other things. Um, it does look like it would be possible to move it over, put the fill pipes through the building office, and then come in to that, the utility room from the side, and avoid having it go over the existing panel. Um, that would, that's gonna cost us some money to do, but that's probably the cleanest solution to avoid the code violations. If we are going to do that at the same time, I would like to pursue getting rid of the existing oil tank and going to a Roth four hundred gallon tank, because we only have about seven days' supply of oil there when it's cold, because we only have a single two hundred and seventy-five gallon tank for the town hall and the community center. I asked Eminem Oil to come evaluate this with me. Um, I asked Charlie Mancozzo to just tell me whether this is doable or not, code compliant or not, and what the cost would be to switch over to a four hundred gallon tank, I don't have the answer for that. Um, you know, that's where we are on that. So the bottom line is, if we wanted to do this as inexpensively as possible, we could probably do exactly what Rick Langley suggested, which is build a hip wall, put an additional panel on. Um, you know, that's not directly under the oil pipes, get rid of the stab lock panel, run everything over to the new panel. Um, if we wanna do it right, we're gonna have to open up the spigots and spend some more money, but I don't know what that dollar amount for doing it right is yet.
Um, I mean, we took five grand, we're talking twenty-five grand.
Uh, I think the tanks themselves are about twenty-five hundred bucks, um, you know, to buy, and then, you know, redoing all the oil piping and then patching the old stuff.
Twenty-five hundred for the four hundred gallon tank?
Yep.
A double wall?
Yeah, double wall stainless tank, double wall stainless tallboy tank.
Why, why are we doing a double wall stainless?
Hmm. Why wouldn't we do a double wall in a public building, you know?
What, what's wrong with?
Of a failure.
What's wrong with a, uh, okay, just look back up. When's the last time an oil tank failed that you know of? In a building?
I don't know, but I don't.
Exactly, so what, so, so why the overkill? Why aren't we just doing a standard tank? Why a double wall four hundred stainless?
If it were me, I would put in a stainless tank, I, why screw around with it?
Cause I, uh, I have buildings that have tanks that are forty years old and are perfectly fine, and they're single wall. And I've never seen an oil tank leak or been punctured. It's not this warehouse, like, you know, people moving equipment around in there. How the heck is it gonna get punctured? And if it, it, and, and it's fuel oil, there's no water in it, if there's water in it, we can't burn it. So why are we need stainless?
Yeah, the only issue I ever had with, with those oil tanks is in their, uh, uh, dirt basement, they'll actually rust from the outside in. But since we have concrete, it's relatively dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's relatively dry down there, I don't see really an issue.
Agree, I agree, Jeff, it's a dirt, dirt basement, and you're not running a dehumidifier, you run a risk. But, but again, they, they, they take forever to rust even at that point, usually it's a fitting issue, and you'll, you'll figure it out way before that tank leaks, way before it leaks.
Yeah, it's usually about fifty years, I had one about fifty years to start to leak.
Okay, so.
So what is it you wanna do then? What is your instruction to me, given that what I've said and your decision, you don't think it's worth buying a double wall tank? Do you want me to drop it? I mean, I was gonna go with the existing electrical, you're the ones that wanted me to pursue other alternatives. So what alternatives should I be pursuing?
You were gonna go with the existing. But we said no, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow this conversation.
So Jeff was the one that said he did not feel it was appropriate to add on to an electrical system that wasn't currently code compliant. Right or wrong, you know, that was his feeling, you know, so I looked at it and said, okay, what are the options? The options are either relocating all of the electrical equipment, or trying to figure out how to relocate the fill pipe. If we're going to all the trouble to replumb, that would be the ideal time to change out the tank, because let's face it, we ran out of oil three times last winter, and we ran out of oil twice the winter before, you know, because we can't get a fill schedule low enough to keep us from running out of fuel when it's cold. So one of the things we need to do is we need to increase our oil capacity or decrease our heat load, one or the other, in the bill. So if we are going to relocate the fill pipe, we ought to consider solving both those problems at once, that's all I'm saying. Now, the only one I know of that would fit in that space and take up basically the same size as our existing two hundred and seventy-five gallon tanks are the Roth tallboys, um, because they have basically the same footprint as the existing, but they're taller. There may be others cheaper solutions, um, if we need to save money on a cheap oil tank, or a single wall tank, if that's your desire.
So we have one single three hundred and thirty gallon tank?
We have one two hundred and seventy-five gallon tank.
Okay.
So the four hundred tallboy will fit in the same space?
Yes, it's got the same floor footprint, it's just taller.
Yeah.
And it's a square tank, not a round tank. So it's more volume in the same physical footprint.
Sounds good to me.
Are you getting the tank out of there?
Cut it in half.
All right.
No, they got it in, they'll get it out.
Okay, so, uh, Jeff Murray, you're, you are the electrician, what is your take? Jeff Murray, you're, you are the electrician, what is your take on this?
I think we need to relocate those oil pipes and do it right and, and I think, cause I think if we don't do that, it's gonna bite us in the long run. Okay. Cause it's, it's, it's blatantly, I don't know who did it and when they did it. But it was a complete hack job, whoever did it, and it should not have been done that way at all. I mean, whoever ran oil lines over electrical panels. In my opinion, is an idiot.
Alright.
No, you just don't do it.
So. I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with trying to move the, the inflow, the oil in, inflow.
Well.
And the, the issue is, we're not filling, we're not, but like, a, a usual home will probably get three to four fills a season. We're getting a fill every week. So we have a potential of having a leak on those electrical panels at, at any time. I mean, those, those fittings, they're good, but. I mean, you can get a cracked fitting, you can get a leak and you won't even know it till the next day after they fill.
So, so here's a, I, I guess, this goes back to. You know, sort of tying everything together and what's our long, is our long term that we're gonna continue to use oil? I mean, when we, if we build a new community center, are we gonna go to propane? And have the whole thing on propane so that your generator, the building, everything's on propane? You know, are we still gonna be using oil in one building and propane in another? You know? I would like, there are multiple questions, there are multiple questions here to, to be answered.
I would like to see us go to propane.
And then the other thing is, and Jeff and I talked about this briefly. Um, you know, should we be doing the electrical upgrade when we do the community center? Because you're gonna wanna tie both buildings onto the same generator. And so you're gonna need to do a generator setup at the same, you know, as you do it, you're gonna have to tie them all together. Would it make more sense to do the electrical? As one big service unit?
Yes.
With full service upgrade to both buildings?
That makes common sense.
We already have a brand new load center already in the existing town hall. And it, but the, the only problem is we have oil pipes running over the top of them.
I, but the load center we have now is, is that gonna, we're gonna want the load center probably in the new building, right?
No, we probably want two, we probably want two independent load centers for each building.
Okay.
But the, the question.
Because then, then you start dealing with the code issues, start locating breakers for another, you know, building into another building. I mean, all the breakers for that building. Should be located in that structure.
Okay, so if the electrical, if the electrical issue is that, is the question of where would we get our heat and our hot water from? And if we chose propane, wouldn't we buy, you know, a thousand gallon tank and bury it and?
Right.
That direction.
You'd buy two or three thousand.
Two thousand, two or three thousand.
Whatever it takes, I don't care, we buy the tank, we own the tank, and we get the, the propane for as inexpensive as we possibly can.
Yeah.
So if that's the direction that we end up choosing to go, then. We wanna do it all at once as Adrian, Adrian's suggesting. Okay.
I do agree, my concern is that. I really don't wanna wait on doing the electrical issues because if we have another tropical storm. And we wipe out the power to the town hall, our servers go down because they're not backed up. Um, my office has no lights. Um, we really struggle to function. Because they did such a bad job of allocating circuits on the backup generator panel. But since that panel is filled, number one. And it's kind of illegal now anyway, because stab block panels haven't been manufactured because they're a fire hazard. Which is what the original reason we wanted to replace that. I really don't wanna wait, you know, three years or however long it takes us to get a community center built. And redo the heating system completely. So yes, you know, ultimately, we're probably not gonna stay on fuel oil for the next ten years. You know, but how much does it cost us every time you run out of fuel oil? Um. You know?
So we have, we're currently calling for a fill up every time it gets to a certain amount?
So there's two things that happen, you know, we're on midwinter. We're on a seven day fill schedule for the town hall. So they come in and fill us up every seven days. Additionally, I have a monitor in my office, one of those rocket monitors for the tank. And when I see it come down to an eighth of a tank, and I know what day we're supposed to get filled. I call and they come doing an emergency fill, you know, and drop a hundred gallons or two hundred gallons or a hundred gallons of diesel. Because on any given day, they have the refueling trucks locally, they don't necessarily charge, have heating oil trucks in our area every day. And they give us an emergency top off to get through. We do that four or five times a winter, you know, when we, it looks like we're gonna run out before we. You know, plus we keep screwing up all the filters and our furnaces. Cause you know, once you get down to the bottom of the tank and you got, you know, you're all the way down, you have problems pulling up sludge and stuff. So that's what we're, we're faced with now.
I don't think it's gonna be that expensive to repipe, I really, I, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal.
I don't, I don't have a, on repiping, I don't necessarily have a problem with a new tank. You know, I, my question is, do we really need a stainless steel double wall, but, um. You know, I'm not necessarily a fan of doing all the electrical now. Um, given that we know we're gonna have to do a major amount of electrical when we go to the new building.
Well, we're gonna have to do this panel no matter what, Adrian. I mean, these, these supplementary breakers have to be on a new panel.
The other thing Adrian is that, you know, I spent quite a bit of time with Rick Langley going over this originally. You know, making sure that we didn't do anything that. We were going to have to undo when we added a new building.
Okay.
So there's nothing here that, you know, we know we need a new panel. Um, so really the only question is where can we put the new panel? And how can we reconfigure the circuits that are on the backup generator? Now, it is possible that at some point we'll get a big enough generator and enough standby power. That we can run everything, including the elevator. Um, you know, in the future, and that will switch out from a manual transfer switch to an automatic transfer switch. Right now, we still have a manual transfer switch until we know what full size we're gonna use. There's no sense putting in an automatic transfer switch.
No, yeah, I get all that, so. So Rick has assured us that what we're gonna do at this point's not gonna be, not gonna be undone or be redundant to something we're doing late.
Correct.
Okay. Right, that makes me feel a lot better.
And if we move the oil points, I, I believe we could probably put that new panel in this old location, correct? If the oil lines were out of the way.
Uh, I think only if we do it after we go to VoIP. And we tear out all the electrical phone wiring connections that are there.
When are we looking at going to VoIP?
I'm still waiting on secondary quotes from South Windsor's IT department. Um, I'd like to do it in the next two to three months.
So I mean, Adrian, Adrian, we probably was, we probably, whatever money we're gonna use moving those pipes, we'd probably save it by rewiring the panel in the existing location. And not having to put a junction box there and running, you know, uh, additional conductors over in a raceway over to the new panel.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I, I'm good with that, I would like to, I'd like to do it with the VoIP and stuff too though, you know?
Yeah, it's a rat's nest down there.
So Eric, I, I, do you have any objection to, to coordinating this around the VoIP?
No. Nope. If you wanna wait to do VoIP first and then do that, we can do that. In the meantime, I will pursue replacing the oil tank and replacing the fill. Do you want me to bring this back to you, or if the costs are reasonable, do you want me to just do it? What's your desire with that?
This is all coming out of LoSiP, right?
No, we'd just be taking this out of our building maintenance funds.
We could use LoSiP funds for this, I mean, this is a town, these are building maintenance issues.
Uh, I think we could probably apply for LoSiP funding and get LoSiP funding. If you wanted to, that's gonna delay it a couple of months, but it's definitely doable.
Well, you've gotta wait for the VoIP anyways. And we have LoSiP funds there that are approved, we have a certain amount sitting, so. It makes sense to use that for this, these types of projects, you know?
Okay, Eric, if it's reasonable, I mean, communicate with us and we can sit there and determine which way is the best way.
Yeah, just email it to us, you know, and then, um, I mean, I would actually look into at least getting a three thirty, at least we'll gain another fifty gallons. I mean, swapping that out to a three thirty, I mean, you're only gonna gain, like, it's only, three thirty is about a foot longer. Versus the two seventy-five, that tank's gotta be at least twenty something years old, so we might as well, if we're gonna replumb it, might as well just put a new tank in, tanks are cheap.
You were going to, you were going to a four hundred gallon tank, which might get you an extra.
Couple of days.
Couple of days, yes, in the, in the bad season.
I'm still trying to fathom how our, our, how our, we're going through that much oil though.
Yeah, I feel awful about that.
I mean, what's our, what's our square footage at the town hall?
I don't know. I don't. I can figure it out, but I don't know off the top of my head.
That'd be under four thousand, no?
Anyway, we're wasting heat, we have, we have, uh. Electric under desk heaters going all over the building, so.
Yeah, we talked to somebody about putting in, and putting in the, the monoflow. Fittings to get that before winter.
You wanna talk about replumbing all of this to monoflow keys?
No, you've got, you, we know we've got two or three, when the new part of the building was redone, they never put them in.
Some. Yep.
So can't we do the balance? I mean, what do we, four or five fittings? You don't have to replumb the whole thing.
Okay, so that's something, that's something that can be evaluated and Eric can bring that to us next meeting, just, just to sit there and see. But it is, it does seem.
It, it addresses the heat, it addresses the heat issue, so. Where we stand right now is Eric is, Eric's gonna get an answer on the amounts and if they're reasonable, he'll. Lock people up for contracts, is that where we're leaving this? But we're gonna coordinate everything behind VoIP.
Are, are we, are, are we switching the size of the tank now? Or are we gonna go with what Eric suggested? He said it would fit. As long as he gets a single wall four hundred, you guys all set with that, or you? I mean, look, I don't know if anybody makes a square, single wall, four hundred gallon. I know Roth makes a square four hundred gallon double wall tank. Cause I've specked that out, I don't know what the other options are, I'm not saying what can fit in there, that's a tight room.
Standard, standard sizes are usually two seventy-five and three thirty of the standard tanks. Yeah, and three thirty is just a little bit longer.
Yeah, and you can have two. You can have two, you know, two of the, two of the two seventy-fives.
Two, two seventy.
Here we are again.
Will not fit in that room.
That's the problem, Adrian, we're getting, we get too close to the furnace at that point.
Oh, I mean, the whole reason why I suggested what I suggested was because it'll fit. Um, and because it at least gets us to four hundred gallons.
Okay, Eric, if it fits, just get us the price, tell us.
You know what?
And, and if it's a, if it's a double wall tank, it's a double wall tank, if you can find a single wall tank that's less expensive. Come back to us with a single wall tank, so we're all good.
He doesn't, we're not gonna, we're not doing this for a couple of months anyways, because we're behind. Do the VoIP first, so if he can get another, if we could spec.
Wait, why would you do?
The VoIP, the VoIP is related to the electricity, this is about moving the, 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 the tank, tank fill.
Right.
So the order you wanna do this in then is oil, then elec- then VoIP, then electric?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, if, if you wanna try to locate the panel where the existing stab block panel is. Then, um, you have to do the fill, because you can't put a new panel there because it's not code compliant. Um, and you'd have to get all the, make sure we got all the telephone wires out of there. You know, and torn out before we do that, so yeah.
Well, I, I'm, my suggestion is it makes more sense to do it in the same location, because otherwise you're gonna have a massive junction box. To run wires to a new location, which is a total, which is a total shit show, for lack of a better term, so.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that you're gonna have to take a bunch of the circuits. You've got two sub panels separated by about six feet right now. Okay, a lot of the circuits in those sub panels are gonna have to swap somehow or other. Um, not sure exactly how, but, you know, you're gonna have to either wire nut them in one panel and. Send them back in a conduit to the other, so, you know.
Yeah, but imagine trying to do that on top of moving the panel. You know?
So the, the logic of this is oil inlet intake. Tank, and then we move our ways through this, okay? So Eric, please come back to us with some numbers so that we're all agreeing, because it makes sense, right?
Alright, fine.
Okay. Um, I'm going on to item twelve, the approval of the minute meetings. Uh, A, the Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. And twelve B, the approval of the minutes for the August thirtieth meeting. All, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright, um, Eric, thirteen, the finance department report, anybody have any questions, any issue? Sorry, I had to close the front door, the dog came in. Um, alright, anybody have any questions? No, any issues? Okay, let's move on to item fourteen, the budget appropriation transfers and over expenditure requests, Eric, are there any?
None at this point.
Okay, we're going on to item fifteen, the tax collector's report, are there any refund requests?
Uh, there are, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's a total of six. Uh, which collectively equal about eight hundred dollars in refunds.
Somebody wanna make a motion on that? Okay, nobody. Uh, I'm okay if we don't refund the taxes. I, I used to vote no all the time, so.
You always voted no, every single time.
Yes. Anybody gonna make a motion on that? Let's go, come on, we gotta get out of here.
Make a motion to refund as listed.
Certainly.
Alrighty, all those in favor? I.
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 Four, nothing, the assessors.
We're, we're dragging the same way you are, Jeff.
I know, the assessors report and evaluation services, any information, Eric? I got, we got nothing there? No?
No.
Alright, department reports that are, have been available, the fire department report is available, the state police report is available. The assessor's office report for the number of. Community interactions is available, the assessors report related to all of the tax adjustments. Okay, cars, then there's the library report, there's senior transportation report, registrar voter report. And those are the ones that we did receive, so. Anybody have any questions, any issues? No? Okay, correspondence, Eric, none, and we're gonna go to public speak. Okay, Ed Srisly, you're up first. Okay, Diane Chocat, you're up next. And left. Um, Carol Lee. You're good, alright, Leanne Hutchinson.
All set.
Thank you, Carol, Leanne Hutchinson.
Okay, I think we're good. Someone wanna make a motion to move to executive session to discuss the union bargaining position for building and land use office?
Go move. Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we're going to invite, we're gonna invite the town administrator and the, um, town attorney into that meeting. I suggest you invite the town clerk also. I am so sorry, Carol. Okay, and we'll invite the town clerk in.
Probably snoring by now.
I heard her. I heard her almost. Okay, so we're good. So man, if you could pass the, uh, the meeting over to Eric and then we can move this. Out, everybody, thank you for joining us. We greatly appreciate your participation.